I'd like to call the Tuesday, September 20th, 2022 Papillion City Council Meeting in order. Ms. Brown, would you please take the roll?
Sunday, Mumgarden, Gaines, Glover, Jaworski, Kluk, Stube, Ingberg.
Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And do we have an affidavit of publication on file?
We do.
And a current copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted in the back of the council chambers. We've got two presentations tonight. One's a special presentation. The other one, it's an okay presentation. Special one is we get to swear in three new firefighters. So it's always a great thing to do. So Chief, I'd like to invite you up. You can make the introductions, tell us a little bit about them, have them introduce their family, and we'll do the oath.
Very good. Thank you, Mayor. I was a little concerned about which category we would fall under, the okay or the special one, but thank you for sharing that. Members of the council, thank you for allowing us to swear three more firefighters in. We are getting closer and closer to our authorized complement, but we can't quite seem to get there with the job market being the way it is. But we have three very quality individuals to introduce you to tonight. It's a very exciting time in a firefighter, police officer career to get sworn in, a very special time. First, we have Connor Maher. Connor, come on up. I did warn them that they're going to introduce whoever they brought with them tonight, so. Connor comes to us from the Lincoln Fire Department, Lincoln Fire Rescue. He had, I want to say, four years?
Just two years.
Two years experience there and decided he wanted to be closer to the metro area, and we are very fortunate to have him. Connor has a bachelor's degree from Creighton University in emergency medicine, which means he also got his paramedic license through Creighton that way, and he is also in the Air National Guard. We had a very unusual circumstance with Connor. When we hired him, he found out he was getting deployed with the Air National Guard. So he disappeared out of town before we had a chance to even swear him in. So he's actually been an employee since January, but he just got back in the country in late July, early August, and then finished up his military duty and was finally able to join us, so we're excited to have him. And now you get to introduce your parents.
My father and mother are here, along with my wife, Brian is my father, my mother Susan, and my wonderful wife Theresa.
And way to throw the wonderful in there. You just wait right there. You're good. Next up is Kevin Ischeide. Those familiar with Papillion-Lavista-Rawston area, the Ischeide name is pretty common. I'll go ahead and say about your dad. I've known Kevin's dad, Joe, from the Rawston Volunteer Fire Department for longer than we would want to say, and then Joe went on to become an Omaha Police Officer and just recently retired. So Kevin comes to us from South Sioux City. I owe apologies to the Lincoln Fire Chief, the South Sioux City Fire Chief, in fact, twice over. It's nice to be able to steal good firefighters and paramedics from other fire departments. So Kevin has been a volunteer with the Rawston Fire Department for 14 years, since he was like 10 years old or something because his dad was there also. Kevin is also currently the Fire Chief in Rawston, so he has obviously good administrative experience as well as the practical experience that he gained being a volunteer all those years in Rawston and then being a firefighter in South Sioux City. So great to have Kevin on board. Kevin has quite a crew with him, so now he gets to introduce everyone.
So I got my beautiful wife, Kim. My sons, Jackson, Caleb, and then daughter Caitlin, her boyfriend Jordan, my mother and father-in-law Glenn and Debbie, my parents, Joe and Julie, and then my captain, ex-captain, Jase, back there, so.
Very good.
And my wife, sister Kathy.
Very good. To have Kevin's now former captain from South Sioux City attend is pretty special, too. It says a lot about that relationship and the bonds that we have in the fire department. And then a quick little word, too. Kevin's father-in-law Glenn Colshien and I went through paramedic training together long ago at Creighton, so it's interesting, the ties that we have in the community and how those ties continue. So thank you, Kevin. And then last, but certainly not least, Aaron McCoy. Come on up, Aaron. Aaron comes to us also from South Sioux City, which is why we had to do the double apology to the chief there. In fact, you two started in South Sioux together, so matching careers, South Sioux together, and now they're starting in Papillion together. Aaron has an associate's degree from Metro Community College, is also a paramedic, brings some really good experience because he's worked in Cass County. Those of you who are familiar with the Cass County system, a little bit different blend of how the fire departments handle emergency medical services down there, but Aaron has been a paramedic there. He was a paramedic with a private company in Sioux City before the Sioux City Fire Department took over the emergency medical services, so that was a really neat transition, and that experience will really pay dividends. Aaron, you want to introduce your wife and son?
Absolutely. So I have my amazing wife, Ashley, in the back, my four-year-old son, Brooks, and then my grandmother, Sharon, over here, and our dearest family friend, Cindy Gordon.
Very good. And the last little tie I'll brag on, Sharon, Aaron's grandmother, I didn't know till tonight that Sharon was his grandmother, but Sharon and my mom were really good friends for years and years and years. And my mom's been gone for 16 years now, so it's great to see Sharon here celebrating with her grandson. So, Mr. Mayor?
People have not heard our oath. It's the longest thing ever. I think it's longer than the president's, but the legislature gives us the words to say, so bear with us. And if family wants to be taking pictures anytime, feel free to come up and wander around. Raise your right hand. Aye. State your name.
I am Aaron Ayman.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Nebraska.
And the Constitution of the state of Nebraska.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
And without mental reservation.
And without mental reservation.
Or for purpose of evasion.
Or for purpose of evasion.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
Perform the duties of firefighter.
Perform the duties of firefighter.
According to law and the best of my ability.
According to law and the best of my ability.
And I do further swear.
And I do further swear.
That I do not advocate.
That I do not advocate.
Nor am I a member of.
Nor am I a member of.
Any political party or organization.
Any political party or organization.
That advocates the overthrow.
That advocates the overthrow.
Of the government of the United States.
Of the government of the United States.
Or of this state.
Or of this state.
By force or violence.
By force or violence.
And that during such time.
And that during such time.
As I am in this position.
As I am in this position.
I will not advocate.
I will not advocate.
Nor become a member of.
Nor become a member of.
Any political party or organization.
Any political party or organization.
That advocates the overthrow.
That advocates the overthrow.
Of the government of the United States.
Of the government of the United States.
Or of this state.
Or of this state.
By force or violence.
By force or violence.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
So one of the very special things in a career in either law enforcement or the fire services, pinning the badge on for the first time, and all three gentlemen have their wives who will do that for them, so go ahead. All at the same time.
Thanks, Chief. Now the extra special presentation, Mr. Josh Shavat. Josh is coming up. Josh is probably the interim director of Grow Sarpy. If people are not familiar with that name, it's the, just the rebranding of the Sarpy County Economic Development Corporation and their tremendous partner with the city on economic development, especially the large, large, large things that are going on, the Amazons and those types of things. So just have Josh here giving us a quarter of the report.
Yes.
As I mentioned, interim, you might give him a recent update, too, of why.
Yep, I can, maybe we'll just start off with that real quick. I know it's been announced to our board and our investors. Andrew Rainbow, who's been our executive director for eight, 10 years maybe now, he's announced he's going to take over the position at Mills County Economic Development. So his last day will be October 7th, so we're working through kind of that transition. I don't anticipate it's going to be a position that's open for very long, if at all. I think we have some good candidates that are already interested in looking at the position, and to that same note, I don't think anyone will see kind of any lapse in service or any of the projects will see any change in how they're progressing. So unfortunate news on the front with Andrew, but I don't think we'll see any change in the near term. It's kind of an interesting point, as it will kind of touch on in my report, which, to be truth told, is kind of just an okay report. It's, we've kind of reached the point in Sarpy County where we've kind of taken up a lot of that developable land, and now we're kind of waiting for the infrastructure to be put in place and be able to be utilized. So it's a good time to kind of take a step back, and you know, what we've learned over this past five years of pretty rapid economic development is we apply it to the next five to 10 years and get out ahead in front of that and get the type of development we really want to see. So we're working on some things on that front, more to come by the end of the year to have some, hopefully some kind of visioning done and some kind of aspirational targets that we can take to the cities in the state and potentially even the federal delegation to say, here's what we can really do in Sarpy County, but we would need some help with that. So more to come on that front, but just a quick touch on the numbers. I apologize, we're like, what, a week away from the third quarter? This is a second quarter report, so there's always one city where we're just sneaking it in before the end of the quarter, and unfortunately, that's the city of Papillion today. So I won't touch too much on the, kind of the numbers on the screen we see up there, and I don't know if I have control. I do have control. Okay, perfect, out of the way. But I mean, just a quick note, everything's pretty much kind of run-of-the-mill, nothing to touch too hard on, but you look at unemployment, I mentioned it with the fire department, it's just tough to find the workers out there right now. There's certainly the demand for the positions that we have construction going up all across the county and all across the metro, but we just hear more and more, it's workforce continues to be the big issue. And we did see a little bit of a jump up there, jumped up to 2.4% unemployment. I think that's part of the, you had people coming out of the school year, people coming back home after college, kind of jumping into the workforce, so I'm sure those people got kind of employed pretty quick, but it was good to see that jump, but we usually kind of see that seasonal jump around June, and it kind of continues throughout the year. So, and then I'm just going to, I guess, hold the numbers, skip down real quick to just make a note on our top permitted projects. If you look, I think about seven or eight out of the top 10 are essentially expansions or remodels or additions, so that kind of goes with the fact, we hear a lot of companies would like to expand, but there's just not the space out there for new construction, so we're seeing a lot of that expansion up there. So, I mean, I don't know if you'd count the parking garage in expansion or addition, but then the only other one up there is the H&amp;H Shine Shop, which can always use more car washes, I suppose, so certainly, I'm just going to be one heck of a car wash for a couple million dollars. But no, we continue to see a lot of development across the area, and that's why it's kind of interesting, we'll contrast everything that's going on with, excuse me, our landed projects, which the second quarter, I think for the first time in a couple quarters, we didn't have any landed projects. I think there's some expansions, especially with the data centers, they continue to expand, we land those just so those are captured in our numbers. So this third quarter, we'll see some of those numbers. So the capital investment that we usually see, like hovering over a billion, it seems like the past couple of years, it'll start to tick back up there, but as far as some of those new kind of manufacturing projects that we really love to see come in, we're seeing, kind of jumping down opportunities here, we're seeing a lot of those come in. As you can see, we had nine new opportunities, so those are projects we could submit a site or information for. We had nine new opportunities, the words were all in the manufacturing sector, so you'll notice two zeros on the warehouse distribution as we see developers build out those facilities. Those companies aren't coming to us, they're going straight to those developers, so, and that kind of is the same perspective for a lot of those midsize industrial, light industrial users, too. There's a lot out there on the market that's getting put up. So we're seeing more and more of those people go straight to those individuals, where they might come to us as if they have questions on incentives, but as we see a lot more kind of local companies expanding, those don't always apply because they're already in the market, so we haven't, we're seeing developers take a lot of the bulk of that demand, which is certainly great and a sign of a healthy economy, but kind of to my earlier point, it kind of puts us in a little bit different position, looking towards the next couple of years than they were, and as we shift, you know, focusing strictly, or mostly on-site development, to maybe a little bit more in workforce development. And kind of piggybacking off that point, maybe one last thing to touch on real quick, just looking at our business and retention and expansion numbers. I know one question I always like to ask to the companies is, what is economic development to you? And more and more, we're hearing it's workforce development. They need the workers to expand their business, to bid on more projects, to keep things on the up and up, and to that degree, we're focusing a lot on the skilled trades workforce development. We just finished the delivery of about 1,200 intro-to-construction kits to eighth and ninth graders. I think 400 of those went to Papillion-Lavista and Papillion-Lavista South. Ninth graders, who is the lowest, Erickson, she really helps coordinate with the school district. She does an amazing job helping us get those to the students and getting some good pictures, and I know the companies really appreciate that. But moving forward, I think we'll definitely try and focus a lot on those, kind of advocating for workers in the skilled trades, but across the board, I know, I think healthcare nurses is always kind of the top of the list of professions we need, but I know there's a lot of advocates for those professions, but we kind of try and fill that need of those workforce, of the skilled trades. So it's kind of a quick run-through of what our second quarter was. I know we'll stay tuned as we kind of work through the transition, and during this transition, we love as much feedback as possible, as you know, as we look, you know, at the past couple of years, what worked well and maybe we'd like to see differently, and we look forward for the next couple of years of, you know, where we'd like to go. So don't be shy, don't be a stranger, and give us a ring if there's anything we can do for the city or anything you see that maybe you'd like to see us a little more involved in, or something we were involved in that you're seeing, hopefully not a potential lapse in, but yeah, it's kind of a, hopefully an okay presentation, but any questions?
Any questions for Josh? Thanks again, and congrats for stepping into the role and appreciate the partnership.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Sturzmann, Administrator's Report, please.
Thank you, Mayor. You may be wondering why I'm giving the city administrator's report. Deputy Administrator Phil Green is attending the annual ICMA conference in Columbus, Ohio this week, so he's not available. ICMA stands for the International City and County Management Association, and I'd add that it's been a busy time for training with several staff members attending events this past week. Phil, Allen, the mayor, and I understand Councilman Mumgarden attended the annual League of Cities Conference in Lincoln. Travis and Carla in the legal department attended the NPZA conference in Kearney this past week. Let's see, Tim, Jesse, and Tracy attended the Nebraska Recreation and Park Association Conference in Hastings last week, and I attended the monthly leadership Nebraska session, which was fortunately held in Omaha. Let's see, the development team, so building, fire, planning, and public works continues to work closely with Gene Graves. I saw Larry Jobin in the audience, so he'll be, he's very familiar with this. On the Oakleaf application, we anticipate the final plat and the agreement on the changes on to be on the next council agenda. Let's see, I'm busy this week. You probably didn't see me in the office today. The Pendleton Enterprises versus City of Papillion trial started today and is expected to extend through next week, Monday. We're working with our legal team led by Dan Fisher of Coley-Jackson on that. And let's see, the recreation department recently hosted Friday Night Bites at the Papillion Landing. More than 500 people attended the event, which included food trucks, a beer garden, and yard games. More Friday Night Bites are scheduled for this Friday, September 23, as well as October 21 and October 28. Once again, Portal School and the Papillion Area Historical Society were hosts of a naturalization ceremony. That was held on September 17, which was Constitution Day. Thirty-five individuals from 18 different countries were sworn in as United States citizens at that event. The 55-plus club at Papillion Landing will host its Fall Festival on October 1st from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM. The event will be held at the Papillion Landing Community Center and features vendors, raffles, a bake sale, sloppy joe or hot dog lunch for kids, kids' games. The Methodist Mobile Diabetes Center and Town and Country Humane Society will be in attendance. This is a fun event for the whole family and a great chance to meet our 55-plus club members. And finally, Mark your calendars for Fall Cleanup Days. It's October 17 through 23. The event is once again in partnership with the City of Lavista and will take place at the Papillion Public Works. This event is open to Papillion residents, Papillion water customers, and Lavista residents, and is a great opportunity to dump old furniture, appliances, electronics, and yard waste and any other junk you may have free of charge. That's all I have.
Thanks, Mark. Not any junk. We don't want hazardous waste or nuclear things, but most any junk. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Gaines.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Jaworski. Please vote.
Seventy-eight, zero, and ayes.
Motion passes. Next is Item D-1, Ordinance 1976, an ordinance to approve a change of zone from AG Agricultural to R4 Multi-Family Residential for the property legally described as attractive land located in part of the south half of the northwest quarter of Section 1, excluding any right-of-way dedication needed for South 72nd Street, South 71st Street, and Ponderosa Drive, all located in Township 13 North, Range 12 East of the 6PM Sarpy County, Nebraska, generally located southeast of South 72nd Street and Schram Road, the applicant's Papio Park LLC, 72 Place South. Is there a councilwoman that'll introduce? Introduced by Councilwoman Kluk. Item D-2, Ordinance 1977, an ordinance to approve a purchase agreement with a manual for the sale of city property located near 620 West Lincoln Street. Is there a councilwoman that'll introduce? Introduced by Councilman Glover. If there's no objection of the council, I would like to move Items F-8 and F-9 up to this point. It's two of the liquor license applications. We've got a lot of annual things to do with budget and levy, and I figured that would take some time, and I figured they may not want to hang around the whole meeting, can if they want, but if there's no objection? Nicole, were we able to do that? Okay. Let me jump to Item F-8. Item F-8, Resolution R220154. It's a public hearing and a vote. A resolution to approve an application submitted by Caniglia's Amano LLC, doing business as Caniglia's Amano, to change the location of the premises of their Class C liquor license from 13178 Lincoln Road, Suite 1, to 11425 South 72nd, Suite 1. It's a public hearing. I'll call for proponents. I know the applicant's here. Take it as an opportunity, come up and introduce yourself and tell us, everybody, what you're doing.
How's it going, guys? I'm Jordan Caniglia, and this is my wife, Jamie Caniglia.
Hi.
So basically, two years ago, we opened up in a one-bedroom apartment during COVID, just to sample our product and throw it out and see if the public liked it, and now we have a great following, and we have kind of outgrown our location, excuse me. So we found an opportunity with the old hop house being empty and seeing that we could kind of have more seating and be able to accommodate bigger groups, because we can't do that right now in a one-bedroom apartment.
Just don't lose Tony Special or the garlic Parmesan.
Never.
The great, Mr. Mumgarden.
I've got a question for you. I'm really sorry to see you leave your current location. You've been just such a valuable thing to the development of that area, you know, the residential development that's grown up around you. People depended on you, because it sits out there to build nowhere. People depended on you, and you provided a service. I've been there several times, your beer was always cold. It was great. So I'm sorry to see you leave, but I understand why you're leaving. You just got too successful. Quit doing that, okay? What's going to happen to your current location?
So we were told that they were going to change it back to a one-bedroom, one-bathroom apartment, just the way, it's actually going to be all residential after we move out, but he does own the land across the street, and he was talking about possibly doing a strip mall or something over there, strictly businesses and stuff.
Well, I would encourage, I mean, this is not for you, but I would encourage anybody involved to follow through on that plan, because your business out there has shown that businesses can succeed in that area.
Absolutely, and we tried everything in our power to actually stay in this location.
I think part of it, too, was that we got in at the beginning, like the midst of the heart of COVID, where it was a really scary time for businesses, and because the way that they had those buildings set up, the units that we have, you really can only use one bay because there's like a two-foot drop. So it's such a small space that it's hard for businesses. I mean, we made it work because we didn't have anything to start from, but any business that has already been established, 764 square feet, when you have to keep like the plumbing where it is and the HVAC and everything where it is, makes it really tough. And so they originally had planned on all of the units on the lower ones of the building that we're in and the one next to it to be for either like little boutiques or shops of some sort, ice cream shop, nail salon.
Yoga studio.
Yeah, there was the yoga studio, things like that, but I think that they didn't have a lot of bites on that, and so they decided that they were just going to change it all back to residential because they can always lease those spaces. So it kind of made it harder for us, as well as a business, like the whole thought was that there would be other businesses coming there, not just the residents, so it would bring a bigger following for us, and the fact that there's no other businesses, you know, kind of limits the new phases that we get to see.
Well, I fully understand what you're saying. I think that your presence there added to the rapid growth of that residential area. I feel sorry for the people who live out there and no longer can just walk down the street and sit, you know, on your patio or wherever and have your pizza and your food and have a beer, but I commend you for what you've done in that area, because you took a business that wasn't supposed to be there, and you made it a very valuable business. So thank you very much, and I'm glad you're sticking around in Papillion.
Thank you.
Any other council questions? Thank you. Are there any other proponents or opponents? I'll close the public hearing. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R220154?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Ingberg, seconded by Councilman Gaines. Any discussion? Please vote.
Seventy-eight, zero, and ayes.
Motion passes. Congrats on the expansion. Look forward to it. Thank you. Item F-9, Resolution R220160, a resolution to approve Lorenzo Gasper as the corporate manager for Blazin' Wings Inc., doing business as Buffalo Wild Wings for their Class I liquor licenses. Motion to approve Resolution R220160? Motion by Councilman Stube. Seconded by Councilman Glover. Any proponents or opponents? Is the applicant here? Okay. Any council discussion? Please vote.
Seventy-eight, zero, and ayes.
Motion passes, so now we're going to go back to the regular agenda. Item F-1, ready for that? Okay. F-1, Resolution R220156. It's a public hearing and a vote. A resolution to approve the one-year road plan for fiscal year 2022-2023. It is a public hearing. I'll open that. Are there any proponents? Anybody want to speak in favor? Any opponents? Close the public hearing. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R220156? Motion by Councilman Stube. Seconded by Councilman Gaines. Mr. Mumgarden.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to amend this resolution. I move to amend the 2022-23 projects to include the extension of North Beetle Street and North Osage Street to First Street during the 2022 to First Street during the twenty-two, twenty-three budget year in the approved one-year plan for highway, road, and street improvements in the city of Papillion.
Is there, so we have a motion to amend. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Jaworski. So we have a motion and a second to amend. So then with that, we'll call for any proponents or opponents. Anybody want to speak in favor or against the amendment, the motion to amend? Yes. And when you come up, if you just go ahead and come up and then state your name for the record, and because we do have a large group, not knowing how many will speak, I'll put a five-minute time limit. Welcome.
Okay. Hi. My name's Bill Smith. I live at one-twenty-one North Beetle Street, and this amendment is going to directly impact my property. You guys have all seen me before. We've talked about this before. I'm going to try to read some of this. I had a cataract done the other day, so my eyes are kind of disagreeing a little bit. So you will recall Paula and myself as being opposed to these street extensions. We spoke a few times at the city council meetings. Our hope is to get these street extensions removed from the one- and six-year road plan. Last fall, when the city council passed the resolution for the initial studies, I thought that was going to include both the traffic study to gather data and the town hall meetings to gather resident input. I did see the measuring devices for the traffic study in the neighborhood last November. The results of the traffic study, which I did get a copy of, seem to bear out what we, the residents, felt, that the benefits would be small, the benefits of these extensions. The first paragraph of the summary statement from the traffic study states, and this is a quote, "The addition of the proposed street extensions is not expected to have significant impact on traffic operations. It is expected that approximately sixty-seven vehicles in the AM peak hour and ninety vehicles in the PM peak hour will move to and from the new intersections. Nineteen vehicles in the AM peak and twenty-eight vehicles in the PM peak are diverted from Eighty-Fourth Street. Twenty-one vehicles in the AM peak and ten vehicles in the PM peak are diverted from Sixth Street," end quote. These numbers really are pretty small. And now, when you compare that with the data from the Tower District Traffic Study that talks about the amount of traffic on Eighty-Fourth Street, and the numbers that I saw there were basically being measured up by Valley, the cross street of Valley, and they said at peak hours, the traffic at Eighty-Fourth Street, and this is prior to the Tower development, were two-thousand-one-hundred-and-seventy northbound, two-thousand-three-hundred-and-eighty-six southbound. So you can take that back to what the street extension traffic study said, and ours is a marginal amount. So part of our last discussion was several of the councilmen wanted data, and the traffic study did provide that data. To my mind, that seems fairly clear, that it doesn't really support the extension, extensions. So I guess, give me a break while I'm just, yeah, okay. The last piece of information I have here that's from those is the street extension traffic study in table one. The total daily trip generation from our neighborhood, they list as three-thousand-eight-hundred-and-eight. Of those, I have information to and from southbound Washington Street, nine-hundred-and-fifty-two, to and from northbound Washington Street, eleven-hundred-and-forty-two. Now, that does not add up to the total three-thousand-eight-hundred-and-eight, so some of them are going out onto Sixth Street and other places. From the Tower District Traffic Study, the total traffic on Eighty-Fourth Street, once again at Valley Street, is fifteen-thousand-one-hundred. So these differences are just dramatic, fractional. Coming from our neighborhood, it's fractional. So then this brings me to the question of, we had the traffic study done, the results are there to be seen. What became of the town hall meetings looking for the resident input? Because that seemed to be the other piece of what was interested in. To my mind, you guys have already seen the petitions that we got. We had a very high percentage of the people we talked to were opposed to this. I believe that those town hall meetings would represent the same type of percentage. So I have to ask, why does this keep coming up? What is, is there some singular thread that's causing this to continue to come up? Something that I don't know about, that none of us know about, because none of the data that seems to be there supports it. If anybody can answer that question, what that thread is, I'd be happy to hear it.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks. Next.
Begin, if you'd state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Lurie Churney. I live at three-oh-one North Osage Street, and I've been in front of you before. There's a lot of interesting topics that was touched on just recently. I think we spent eleven-thousand dollars on a traffic study. Is that correct? Relatively. And it proved what we thought it did. It really wasn't going to help the area and what was going to be accomplished. What were the fire chief and also the police chief comments about, I think they had a discussion about what their thoughts were. Do we know what that was?
Yeah, I'll update that at the beginning of the council discussion.
Okay. All right. Thank you. And I guess, Tom, what is your interest in this, to bring this, keep bringing this up? I don't, I don't quite understand it. We have a full support here from our neighborhood and so forth. So I think, myself, and we would like to hear, what's the interest?
I'll answer that during the council discussion.
Okay. Perfect. And I talked about safety before. Now, I understand, you know, this doesn't affect the third street where I'm at. But I also want to bring up again that, you know, I had a, early last week, we had a group of girls in a car. They went down the street. There's a, there's a bump coming from North Grandview down Third Street to Osage Street, and I've seen them go airborne three times. I went out on the corner. I was going to stop them, and luckily, they didn't come back. So that's a safety concern as far as for that. And the area residents that are affected, and we have a great turnout tonight, we signed a petition. We had forty-three people sign it against extending the streets. I think enough is enough. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Welcome.
Hello. My name is Paula Adams, and I live at one-two-one North Beetle Street. Frankly, I'm disappointed. I got this letter in the mail the other day. I was excited. It came from our city council, and it said things like, "We're going to be upfront about what we're doing. We're going to be fiscally responsible. This is our promise to you." So I'm frankly mad, because this was not on the agenda. Here is this motion. It's well-known that there is a neighborhood that doesn't like it. And the way I get notice is a message left on my phone from one of my neighbors who found out at two o'clock today I get notice. Fortunately, I was home. Fortunately, I was able to pick up the message. But frankly, I'm disappointed, because you're here to serve the people. You're here to represent their needs. You're here to tell them what's going on and look after their best interests. This happens now without any notice. The people of the neighborhood get hours to respond when it's an unknown issue. I'm disappointed. I'm mad, because I live in Papillion, and I moved here, thinking that we had a city that was responsive to its community. Now, I can report numbers, like Bill did, and I can report numbers like my neighbor did, and I can tell you why I don't think this is fiscally responsible. But you've heard these arguments before, and I will state them again. But I will also state things like, "I moved here because it was quiet. I moved here because I believed that the police were responsive. I moved here because I believed it was safe and people listened to me." And I didn't see any of that today. Okay, I did get a note from my neighbor who got a note from a city councilman, but this was not made public. And what has been made public by a group of us over years coming to council meetings and planning meetings is that there is public opposition. So, once again, I'm going to state my opposition. I'm going to tell you that there are other people who can't make it here, that I know still do not want this to go through. And what you're doing, this is not the way it should be done. Thank you.
Thank you. Next. Anybody else? Welcome.
My name is Greg Penning. I reside at four-three-one East Second Street. In case you haven't noticed, we like our neighborhoods the way they are. We don't want them changed. We don't want any more traffic running through them. Just in case you didn't notice that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? See none? Oh, welcome.
My name is Jason. I live at three-ten North Osage.
Last name?
Palmer. Sorry. I'm just newer to this. I'm one of the younger ones that live here, kind of like, and I've moved here because of the peace and quiet. I'm a twenty-two-year Army vet, multiple deployments. This is my quiet space. It's where I live. This is one of the reasons I moved here. I quite frankly don't see the point of it. I really don't. It doesn't make any sense to me. I mean, just talking to all my neighbors, we're completely against it. I'm against it. My neighbor couldn't be here, Mike Wylie, I think, Wheely. He got some emails out. He couldn't be here, but I think I'm speaking for our neighborhood as well, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Lee and Linda Light, two-twenty-two North Beetle. We're against it.
Anybody else? Yes.
Edward Weniger, seventeen-oh-nine Ridgeway Drive. So I don't live near there. I have a quiet neighborhood, and I understand their case. I just wanted to voice my support of them in opposition to the city council's maneuverings, mainly just because if I had a cause, I would like them to stand up for me. And if you guys can divide up neighborhoods and pick off little groups of people, then that's more problematic than all of us standing together. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Welcome.
Lorene Renante, one-one-zero-eight Park Drive. Although this is not my neighborhood, it is my potential ward, since I am running for city council, and I have met with some of these lovely people. And I have spoken out at the Planning Commission against this. And I would hope that the council would please agree with these residents, not to mention this is frivolous waste of our taxpayer dollar, and that is one of my biggest concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Council discussion. As we head into council discussion, there were two questions asked that I think I can answer. One was the question about the town halls, just from a normal process perspective. They did have the discussions. The outcome of that then was the traffic study, and then the belief would be there would be another council discussion and input. Absent an amendment to change things, that will still be the case. The extensions are currently on the six-year road plan, I think for twenty-two-four, twenty-two-five, if things don't change. That's what was previously approved and reaffirmed by a couple of committees. So in that normal process, then each year, when we update the six-year plan, there's always an opportunity to discuss, so it can be discussed there. And then, if it follows the normal plan, stays on twenty-two-four, twenty-two-five, then at the point that it would go for construction and funding, then there'd be a series of public meetings around that. What's different here today is just the council member has brought a motion to amend, which they have a right to do, and so now we're dealing with that item. So that diverts a little bit from the traditional process. But if we stay with the normal process, there still will be a couple of hearings. The other question was chief's input. There was a Public Works Committee meeting in July where the chiefs were asked by the Public Works Committee that very specific question. And the, the fire chief input was basically with the current station configuration, minimal impact to response times. There is the potential down the road that the downtown station could theoretically relocate. That'll do some things, response times. If it moves over towards Seventy-second and Cornhusker, then it could improve the response times. But that's a, that's a long term if the built environment changes, but with the current environment. And then from the police perspective, they presented data on number of calls. It's not a high-call area. And then of the call types that are received, there would be some improved impact, but it would be minimal from a public safety perspective. I think those are the two questions I picked up on. But council discussion. Mr. Mumgarde.
Well, I'll begin, I'll begin by following up on what the mayor was saying to answer the question as why this was not on an agenda and why you didn't get notice of this. And I will tell you, I didn't get notice of this either. We have long, as he explained, we have long followed a process where the one- and six-year road plan was the only road plan that we, that the council would see, and we would debate it. And it would typically come in in the fall. It was here last year approximately exactly this time. And we had this debate at that point. You came in, you were notified, you went through everything. Well, out of the blue this year, the administration changed the process. If they discussed it with the council, they sure as heck didn't discuss it with me. So last Friday, here comes the agenda, and it does not have the typical one- and six-year road plan that I have been seeing for over twenty-five years. It had a one-year road plan, and that one-year road plan did not have your, those extensions on there. I therefore had no choice but to keep this issue alive by bringing it forward by an amendment to the one-year road plan. And of course, you did not get notified of that. You can talk to the administration about that, because I didn't get notified of the change either until last Friday, when I saw, first saw the agenda. Why this was, where I'm told we're going to see a one-in-six road plan, one-in-six-year road plan. Now, what good is a one-year road plan being followed by a one-in-six-year road plan? I don't quite know. But in any event, that's why we're here today, surprising you with something that we have been debating for quite some time. I have no choice but to keep it alive by, by bringing forward this surprise amendment, because frankly, the administration surprised me, too.
Next will be, oh, go ahead.
Go ahead. You want to, if you want to add something, go ahead, Mayor.
You, your, one question, just for clarification. Probably twenty-eight years, there's, the one-in-six has been treated as one item, a one-in-six-year road plan, one item. Legislature made a change, I don't know, a few years back. The one, one-year plan is in one set of statutes, and the six-year's in a different. The legislature treats them as two, two different things. The one-year plan, the intent of that is a funding, basically an approval of a funding. In fact, even bringing a separate one-year plan for a vote, depending on how you read the statute, you could argue we don't even the statute, you could argue we don't even need to do that. It's the approval of the budget approves the funding, and that may be sufficient for the one-year plan. The six-year is the longer-term planning. I think the legislature made the change because I think it was a paper reduction-type act a few years ago. One of the things we're doing on the administration side is we're looking at a lot of our processes. Are they up with current statutes? Is there a more efficient way to do things? We're doing a lot of that in the planning and building world because it takes a long time to develop. If we can do anything with process efficiency and drive down time, that saves cost on the developer side and the city side. So, we've actually got a team together of building, planning, fire, legal, that's been meeting to look at a lot of our processes around planning, building, and development to look if we can gain any efficiencies. Some of them are procedurally internally, some will be more philosophical policy discussions we'll have with council if we should make them or not. We're going to have a council retreat probably in January. But the six-year plan specifically, our traditional practice, and I don't even think state law requires this, is we go to the Planning Commission and the city council. So, the next time it would, under our normal process, the next time it would come to council is after it's been to the Planning Commission. It hasn't been to the Planning Commission yet, so there should be no expectation it comes to the council yet. I think it'll probably go to Planning Commission in November, I believe. So, whether a council member agrees or disagrees with changing processes, that could be argued. Is there a right communication or not? That could be argued, but just because we've been doing it one way for 28 years, we're not making the assumption that's the right way to do it for the next 28 years. We're evaluating a lot of our processes. Mr. Gaines?
No.
Oh, Mr. Mungard, go ahead.
Well, my position over the years, and when this has come up in the one- and six-year road plan, has been very clear that I'm in favor of these extensions. So, again, when it was thrown in my face, I had to bring it in here, and I'm sorry. I apologize that you haven't been adequately notified. Up to the prior, up to about two years ago, I represented the western half, western part of that neighborhood. I represented the houses that your cars from the eastern side drive past every day. And I'm well familiar during that time with the traffic of what that means. Now, I certainly understand how some people, principally the people in the eastern side, the southern side of that area, will see increased traffic and will see a detriment. But I'm trying to benefit the interests of what I see as the vast majority of the people in that neighborhood, who are currently having hundreds of cars drive past their house every day because that area has such limited entrance and exits. The petition has, as you say, 43 signatures. While I'm just sitting here and thinking that there are many people who will see the benefit if there are additional areas to go, you know, for the traffic to go through. In fact, as you noted in the traffic study, it is expected that approximately 67 vehicles in the AM peak area and hour, AM peak hour, that's one hour, and 90 vehicles in the PM peak hour will move to and from the new intersections. That's 157 cars in only a period of two hours each day that will not be going past the houses of the people who live on the western side of this area, because that's how you get in and out of your neighborhood. If you're going south, you've got to drive all the way to Jefferson or Washington to get out of there. And that's 157 cars in just two hours every day. The traffic study goes on to say that queues, lineups, people, cars being backed up waiting to get out on the street are anticipated to decrease at the intersection of Beetle Street and Sixth Street and Washington Street when these extensions are made. Because anybody going south, either southwest, southeast, and principally southwest, will not go to Washington Street. I can't imagine why you would drive down to Washington Street and sit there in a line waiting to get out when you can just go south, one more block, two more blocks, three more blocks, onto First Street where there's a stoplight. It also says connectivity between the streets within the study area and out and outside of it would improve. That just means people can get in and out. The neighborhood's access to local roadways and permeability would increase with the addition of the three access points. The street extensions would provide more redundancy in the roadway network by offering more than one direct route to the residential neighborhood. It does note that traffic may possibly increase at these access points, but that it would reduce traffic on Washington Street, which is my principal concern here. Reduce traffic on Washington Street, and I would say equally on Jefferson Street because Jefferson Street in that stretch is just a parking lot. It's, you know, you drive through there in the daytime when the cars are parked in the diagonal parking, and it's a very limited sightline up and down Jefferson Street. So, getting cars off of Jefferson Street, I think, could be a good thing. Certainly, we've spent a lot of time and money over the last couple of years. Some tragedy occurred because of the traffic on Washington Street, and we spent a lot of money trying to reduce that risk by reducing the speed. I would also say we discussed reducing the traffic on Washington Street. We looked at bypasses. How would you do that? So, this study says what any logical person would know is true, that if there are other ways to get in and out of that neighborhood without ever touching downtown Papillion, downtown Papillion has benefited. We have fewer traffic going through that area of town that we are working very hard to make safer. We just spent hundreds of thousands of dollars to put up some new streetlights or some new overhead lights just to make that area safer. And we want to worry about the cost of doing this. Now, these street extensions, well, I'll go on with the traffic study. It points out that we don't need any signals on these streets, on these intersections. They'll be perfectly good intersections. They do have a summary down here that I don't quite understand when it says it's anticipated that the addition of the three proposed access points would not have significant impact on traffic operations. I don't see how that matches what they just said above here. I guess what they're talking about is traffic operations being the operations of the intersections there, that they will, those intersections will work, put it that way. Now, I'll tell you that these street extensions have gone through numerous public and city meetings over the years, and I think that the council is sufficiently informed on what this means. This has actually been in discussion for 2025 years. I've been on the council for at least that long, and back when Pete Goodman was mayor, this was a matter of discussion. I remember it well. And those extensions were not made at that time because we chose to focus instead on the more critical extensions of streets out on the western side of the business district. The only reason that these streets have not gone through historically is because when that area was built, First Street did not exist. It was laid out with the expectation that First Street would exist. That is why those streets come, I mean, those two streets. I'll focus just on Beetle and Osage because my amendment removes Third Street from this It has been very clear from the design of those streets that they were always intended to go south into that future street that became First Street. Now, I've lived, so this really shouldn't be any big surprise to anybody that the council is continuing to discuss this, and some people in the council think it's a good idea. I go by something I call reasonable expectations. I want to keep, I want to support people's expectations of how life will be in Papillion. But they have to be reasonable expectations, and I cannot see, look at that area and think that anybody who has come into that area since First Street was created 20-plus, 25-plus years ago would have any reasonable expectations that these dead ends would always just end a half-block away from this street, empty land there. There's no development there at all. Why would you ever have a reasonable expectation that these streets would not continue on? So, that's why I'm here. I have a couple of concerns about, you know, the budgeting. We've been given, you know, just today, a proposed, you know, discussion of my proposed amendment, the financial effect. Now, it lists incorrectly, it lists the cost for all three of those extensions as being I note that that is up from approximately the $650,000 for all three of those that we were told just one year ago. I'm told that, well, that was wrong. So, I sit there and think and say, okay, I'll take the staff's numbers as they give them because I assume they're right. Unfortunately, what that means is that with my amendment to remove, I've compromised. I sat and listened to the discussions. I sat and listened. I listened to the Fire and Police Department's advice. I said, okay, Third Street's not worthwhile. Let's don't do Third Street. When we do that, if we eliminate Third Street, which is, you know, on here, 600-some thousand, this amendment really is a cost of $715,140, a lot of money. I am surprised by that because I came into here tonight expecting that number to be closer to $425,000 based upon the so-called incorrect information we were given a year So, our delay, well, I guess if those numbers were incorrect, our delay didn't cost us a dime maybe, but if they were correct, our delay has cost us $290,000. I will just simply say, I understand how costs are going up, and I accept that, okay, did it bump up $290,000 over the year? Maybe it did. And I'll just tell you, if we keep waiting, we won't ever be able to do this because it'll just get more costly and costly. This is the most, doing it now in this budget year is the most efficient way we're ever going to get. Who knows what we'll be told next year about the numbers being wrong? They seem to fly around all over the place. I simply say, we got to do it, and we got to do it now because it ain't going to ever get any better. We're not going to have any more universal acceptance of it, and it may just get more costly. You know, the Fire and Police have studied it, and they did show us that they will have increased response times. The Fire Department showed that there will be a good portion of this neighborhood that will go from a response time of under 30, to a response time of under two minutes to a response time of under a minute. It was characterized as not very much. If I'm the person waiting for the rescue squad to get there, I think it is a big deal. So, yes, there is benefits by doing this. That is why I have brought this amendment forward, and I would encourage us all to, you know, just bite the bullet and do it, and tell the staff that they will just find the extra money someplace. We amend the budget constantly every year. Just a couple of weeks ago, we were amending the budget. So, that's why I brought this forward. That's why I continue to bring this forward. If it doesn't pass tonight, yes, I will be talking about it again at the one-year, one and six-year road plan because I think it's the best thing for the city as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you. Just two quick comments. One mentioned that even seeing the one-year plan tonight was a surprise. I would, from the administration perspective, I would counter that a little bit in that the current six-year plan that, one, the connections have been on the six-year plan since probably 2012. They've been sitting out there, and they've always been way out there. So, you're right, it's not an unknown. It's been out there for a long time. And the August of 2021 council vote did put it, did put those connections in the year 2024, 2025, and that was the August vote. And then, since then, we've had two Public Works Committees discussing roads, and both of those committee meetings reiterated that keep them on the 2024, 2025 plan, so we haven't made any changes there. So, then, just a second. So, then, the one-year plan that came forward is absolutely consistent with the one- and six-year road plan because the one-year portion of the approved plan did not have these connections, so the one-year plan that was on today's agenda not having them is absolutely consistent. So, I would argue that there is no surprise. The other item in regards to incorrect fees and wrong calculations of staff on the costs, I would argue with that as well. Anybody looking at the news and inflation and paying their own bills understands what cost is going, and especially in the construction world, concrete and steel and labor, I'm surprised they came in as low as they did. And you're right, any delay is going to just continue to increase them, but the idea that we were wrong with original numbers and were right now, I would argue that they were both right based on the information, but go ahead. I think I can get you, there you go.
Okay. I don't want to argue about it, but I went and looked, went back and looked at the Public Works Committee minutes from
June or July.
When this was last discussed, and I'm not, I wasn't a member of the Public Works Committee. It's my reading of that committee that, no, it did not recommend keeping it as it was. It recommended, it was a two-to-two split vote as to should it be kept in the 23, 24 or not.
Just for the record, the June 7th committee meeting, there was a lot of discussion on this, and there were a couple of motions made. One of the motions was council member Gaines recommended the approval of the one- and six plan be tabled pending the feedback from the Fire and Chiefs. That motion to table by Gaines, seconded by Sunday, then a vote was two-two. So, that one didn't, the tabling did not pass. Then, the subsequent motion after that, there was a motion to approve and move the three connections from 2023, 2024 to the, move them up to 23, 24 in the plan. That motion was by Councilman Jaworski, seconded by Councilman Stube, and again, on a vote that failed two-to-two. After that was another motion, a motion by Councilman Stube to approve the one- and six as recommended by Public Works with the three connections remaining in 2024, 2025, seconded by Councilman Jaworski, and that passed on a three-one vote with Councilman Gaines being the no. So, the committee recommendation then was to keep it in the 2024, 25 as originally presented, approved by council.
And, okay, I can understand that. I will also point out that I certainly was never a part, was not a part of the Public Works Committee at that time. I had not been provided the minutes of that until this came out. So, when I say that the change from the one- and six-year plan to one-year plan, it certainly was a surprise to me when I saw it on Friday. I don't believe it had ever been discussed in even the Public Works Committee. I accept. If that's the change, that's the change. It's going to happen. I just wanted to explain to the citizens why I am not trying to pull one over on you. I am not trying to do something that's surprise, that is a surprise to you. I was put in the same I was put in the same position as you have been. I didn't know we were gonna discuss this until this weekend.
And again, for the citizens, a little bit how the committee process works, or at least how I use it and why there should be no surprise, is the council formally adopted a policy August of last year with it on the 2024, 25. There was some discussion, a lot of development going on. The Tower District was mentioned. So priorities on roads changed throughout the year. So as part of the budget planning process, we got to look at a lot of those. And knowing that there were changes potentially in the road plan, that's why I sent it back to the committee. And a committee is four council members for discussion and, and working through some items. And so the question was about the one, the one and six-year road plan. And then, since the committee's motions actually supported what the council had already approved, there was no change. And so there wasn't a need then to go back to the full council and basically say, we had a committee meeting, we didn't change anything. The committee recommendation was consistent with what the full council had already approved in keeping it in 2024, 25, which is why there was no further discussion, why it didn't show up in the budget, why it was not on a one-year plan, and why the one-year plan as presented today followed the normal process and actually is consistent with what the full council had approved in August of '21. And the committee had reiterated the council. So the council, if the committee, and we're dealing with this in some areas, if the committee would make a recommendation to change philosophically what the council has previously done, then that will then begin a discussion of the full council of, there's a recommendation of a policy change. What do we want to do with that? We'll grapple with that through the normal process. But that wasn't the case here. The recommendation was stay consistent with the council approval. Mr. Gaines.
So I want to go back. I've been on this council for almost 10 years. And I can tell you at least five or six times that members of this council preached transparency and told everybody how egregious it was to bypass a vote or to not give the people a chance to speak. As the mayor's already said, we sat at the landing last August and we promised our citizens, this is not gonna be the last time that you hear this. And you have a council member that's been on this council for 25 years roughly, that somehow he's now surprised by the process that's happened over and over and over and over for 20-plus years. It's my opinion that the reason that he made this amendment today was to shut out people from speaking, to not have to sit here for four hours and argue something that has been spoken, spoken about for decades. The thing about the city of Papillion is that when we need something, when our citizens need something, we provide it to them. When we needed a new police station, we built a police station. When we needed a new fire station, we built a fire station, public works facility. The reason these roads aren't done is because we don't need them. Our constituents aren't asking for them. We said in a meeting in August last year, and I fought with the council, to only approve the traffic study, to not approve the money to design this project that we don't know that we needed to do if the traffic study came back and said we didn't need it. But we still approved all the money and fortunately with, the city staff did the traffic study and we didn't waste the money on design. So Mr. Mungar will tell you, you know, 197 cars or 157 cars, it's a very small fraction of vehicles, even if it is just morning and, and evening rush hour when we all know that's the majority of time that traffic passes. But in the report where he's confused about this summary, there are two spots in this report, not just one, but two spots in this report. "The addition of the proposed street extensions is not expected to have a significant impact on traffic operations." In summary, "It is anticipated that the addition of these proposed access points would not have significant impact on traffic operations." So we're sitting here, and I printed this out so everybody could see it, would not have a significant impact on traffic operations. Okay? So we're sitting here, it's something that absolutely has to be done. It's just so important. It's not gonna have a significant impact. Over $700,000 of taxpayer money to do something that's not gonna have a significant impact and that the residents don't want. And this is, this is a combination of being fiscally responsible and looking out for constituents. And I do realize this is in my ward, but I really don't care if it's in Ward 1, 2, 3, or 4. This is about the city of Papillion. This is about what impact it's going to have on the city of Papillion. Not a significant one. Mr. Mungar will tell you that the police and fire chiefs both said that this would have some sort of impact. I am on that committee. We met in June and I tried to postpone this vote because the only thing that was in this report that may have swayed me would be increased protection for my constituents. And so I asked to table the item. I asked for the police chief to come in and speak. I asked for the fire chief to come in and speak. From the minutes of that meeting, Chief Bose said, "At the current location, there would be no advantage to response time." Chief Widded says, "However, if there was access, as far as response times, in the event that there was another access point on Third Street," which is not one of the proposed streets that Mr. Mungar is proposing, "that would be a good option if Third Street opened. It would still only increase response time or decrease it 20 to 30 seconds." So we have a Public Works Director that is not recommending this. We have a fire chief that says it's not gonna have that big of an impact. We have a police chief that says it's not gonna be that big of an impact. And we have a traffic study, but we're still sitting here talking about it today. As confused as some of you are in the, in the audience, some of you residents, I'm right there with you. It's seven, over $700,000 to do something that no professional, just a politician, no professional has recommended that we do this project. Our constituents don't want the project. So I, you know, I, you can sense my frustration, but it's just another example of, excuse my language, but pissing away money. Over $700,000. And it just has to be done, but it's, it hasn't never been done before. We don't need it. So obviously, I won't be supporting this.
Mr. I know there's gonna be a lot of emotion in the room, but for decorum, I would ask no clapping, no comments. Mr. Ingberg.
Thank you, Mayor. I apologize in advance if I say or repeat anything that my colleague Councilman Gaines has already said, but we don't get together and compare notes to see what anyone's going to say, so please bear with me. You know, one thing I've always liked about the council for the last several years was we've been able to be disagree, be able to disagree without being disagreeable. But on the other hand, what I perceive, it's my perception, as something is happening that is disagreeable, I feel a need to call it out. And that's what I'm going to do. I will say this because this came up since we started talking about it. The mayor stole one of the things I was going to say because when you say that your excuse for doing this on so short notice is because it was a one-year plan in opposed to the one-to-six-year plan, that holds no wonder that excuse. Why? Because this, this proposed amendment tonight was never in the one-year plan for this year. So it makes no difference. Now, the mayor also mentioned the budget process. What I find interesting is that Councilman Mungar could have brought up this project if it was that important anytime before or during our budget discussions, but he did not. To me, and I'll be frank, and it's only my opinion, but this amendment is an attempt to put one past the people that live in the ward I represent. Because the reason for having a, an amendment, Councilman Gaines hit on the head. If you do an amendment, it doesn't appear on any public agenda. Nobody knows it. Nobody sees it. If nobody sees it or is aware of it, they don't know to even come and testify. So what happens is, the council takes action and the people that it affects, all of those out there, they don't even know about it until it's already done. Now, Mr. Mungar has sat there many times and pontificated to all of us about, we need public input, we need to be transparent. That's not what this is. This is trying to blow one by you, those of you that lived over in that, live over in that area. And I'm sorry if I sound harsh, but that's the way it looks like to me, and I think it's the way it looks like to many people. You know, I think it's deceptive. And I'm disappointed. Councilman, you know, what's funny is, Councilman Gaines and myself only, we represent the ward that's affected, we weren't even made aware of it till late this morning, early You would think if it was that important of an item to Councilman Mungar or anybody else, someone would have said something, but they did not. Why did they not? Because they did not want Councilman Gaines and myself to give any advance notice to the people we represent. Because then they would show up, as they did tonight. But I will tell you, because of this short notice, this amendment, this room would be more than full of people that signed a petition, 45 members that signed it. And those that have not signed a petition and were against it, they couldn't get off work quick enough. They couldn't be here. They didn't even have time to write emails to any of us. That's not good business. And I give Councilman Mungar credit, he's a very clever politician. I'm glad I'm not a politician. It worked to a certain extent because, look at the people that are here, there's very few compared to what would have been here. So it did work to an extent. But because of the short notice, it was cut back. Now, let's talk about not a pity, but just facts. The extension on the one-to-six-year program, as the mayor said, it's been on there for years. It has always been on the bottom of the priority list. No council since I've served on this city council has ever given it a priority or funded it until a recent city engineer decided to move it up in the pecking order. That tells me just that alone, that it never saw the light of day and no one was interested in funding it, that tells me the cost benefit does not benefit anyone. It's not worth it. I think it's time to remove the road program completely. You know, Councilman Mungar said something tonight, he mentioned me previously about these roads were always intended to be extended. That's wrong. I say that's wrong because I was living here, I've been living here, let's put it this way, since 1954. Those roads were planned to be dead ends because they could go no further because the main line, the main east-west line of the Unipacific Railroad ran right next to them. There was no way to extend them. And rightfully so, councils during that time never planned to extend the roads, nor did they think they would ever have to, nor did the people that bought the homes. Because who would have ever thought the Unipacific would discontinue that main line? So they weren't designed to go through. They were designed to dead end. Now, we voted this down once before, but it was brought back and I won't even go into my thoughts on that. But Councilman Mungar got what he wanted. He supported, voted for $11,000 taxpayer-funded traffic study. The result of that study did not tell him what he wanted to hear. Because what the traffic study says, quote, and somebody mentioned it from the audience, "In summary, it is anticipated the addition of the three proposed access points would not have significant impact on traffic operations." Another thing he failed to mention that shows up in his traffic study is, if we were to put the traffic stations in, the city would probably need to spend additional money such as roadway narrowing or speed tables along Beetle Street and Third Street to help slow down the new traffic that would maybe arrive. That, that could really was left out and that's part of it, part of the study. Because that did not work, the next information was sought, and thankfully, Councilman Gaines asked for it, was the input from the police and fire chief about response times. You already heard the answer to that. They both said it wouldn't have any, would have no impact. And I also ask myself, and I wonder about this, Mr. Mungar mentioned, or Councilman Mungar, I'm sorry, mentioned that he represented the west side of 84th Street, which is true. I now represent the west side of 84th Street. It occurred to me recently, there's a dead-end street in the ward he represented, represented for years. A dead-end street, not unlike the streets he's talking about and we so urgently need to do now. It's a dead-end street that he never once recommended it be extended. He never once asked to fund it. He never once asked to have it on the one-to-six-year road plan. So I guess it's okay to extend roadways where other people live that he doesn't represent as opposed to areas he does represent because it never saw the light of day. So here we are. We are asked to spend $700,000 taxpayer dollars to build road extensions. Road extensions that those affected do not want. The traffic study states has no effect, that will have no impact on emergency response If this were to be something that would really help the community, it might be worth considering, but it doesn't. I won't support this amendment. I won't ever support anything like it. And I'll ask other council members to vote no. If you should choose to vote yes, I'll leave it to you, you that decide to vote yes, I'll leave it to you to explain why roads that aren't wanted have no effect and no effect to emergency response time, that never saw the light of day on the road program before, which tells me it ought to be removed completely. You can explain to constituents why you're willing to spend $700,000 for roads that help no one, that roads that go basically nowhere to benefit anybody. To me, if you're gonna spend $700,000 that nobody, on something that nobody wants and doesn't help, I'd much rather we use that money for something that benefits the entire community. I'll give you an example. We have a brand-new park plan. One major component of that is upgrades and improvements to the city park at 84th and Lincoln that we use for major events like Papillion Days, like Winter Wonderland and other functions. That benefits everybody in the community. I'd rather spend $700,000 to get that going and implement that than this. Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Jaworski.
Hold on, hold on one second. Your mic's not on. There you go.
As I'm looking at the 21, 22 road plan, did we pull out the Park Road, Halleck Park Road?
No, that's, the design of that is in the budget that we're gonna be voting on. The construction of it will be the following fiscal year then. So the design of the Halleck Road is in the budget you'll be voting on.
So where do I find that at? Because I don't see it here in the 21, 22 road plan.
If I remember right, that is being funded with the Park and Recreation Fund since it's parks. So you won't see it on the one and six plan, you'll see it in the, in the park one.
Well.
So that is in the budget.
Okay, because I've been hearing, we're Okay, because I've been hearing we're fiscally irresponsible. Well, I think we are with this, with the Park Road. Why do we want to spend two hundred and fifty thousand to do a study when that Park Road's been asphalt forever? It needs to stay asphalt because that's a park road? We turn that into a concrete street. We're turning that into a Speedway with kids in it. And I think that's absolutely crazy, and I think we need to really talk about that too before we go a whole lot farther.
Yeah, and just so we stay on topic, let's stay on the motion to amend, which is the two connections, but to your point, but again-
I'm hearing waste of money here.
No, what I'm saying is, the topic you want to discuss, we do have that on tonight's agenda, so we won't lose your thought. We'll bring it up when we hit the budget. Ms. Klug.
Thank you. I started with about three screens' worth of notes. You'll be happy to know that it's down to about three points. I'm not going to reiterate what Councilman Gaines or Councilman Ingberg have said. They've done a great job of it, and I share many of their comments. I will briefly state that we have been looking at this budget. Councilman Jaworski just stated that. It's been very clear since the beginning what we were planning on doing this year, and what roads we were looking at. So I don't understand why, all of a sudden, it became a priority project for any council member. It's still on the one-and-six-year road plan. It took two simple phone calls and about fifteen minutes this afternoon to find out that we're still looking at a one-and-six-year road plan. So it is still something that can be debated and talked about as we move into the future. It's not something that should be brought up on a Monday afternoon and voted on on a Tuesday evening. More consideration should be given to how we are going to spend seven hundred thousand dollars. I look heavily at those that we employ as a city. What are their thoughts? What did our Public Works Director say? What did our chiefs say, both police and fire? What did our accountants say? What can we afford this year? And when we were looking at that to plan our budget, our department heads were having those meetings. They were working on what makes logical sense to expend now. What makes sense as we look at community development with Mr. Sturzma to be able to say it makes sense to change this road now and to wait and hold that one off for another year. I certainly, as an elected person, do not have the expertise to go against what we hire as very professional, highly educated department heads, and think that I would know more than they do. On the contrary, we've got multiple people gone right now, because we are giving them the latest and greatest training to make sure that we are truly doing it in a logical, good manner as we move forward. Will we never extend any of those roads? I don't know. Never's a hard word to say. But to take it from a Monday afternoon to a Tuesday night and say, doesn't matter what all of these people say that have an education, I'm going to change it, I simply cannot do. The last thing I want to talk about is the finances. I know that we have said, wow, we change the budget all the time. Well, we do make budget modifications, but it's not because of lack of planning. Most of the time, it's there's an override, or we've been changed in what our taxes have been bringing into us, the amount of sales tax that's happening, or it's an emergency. It's not, well, this is my pet project, and I'm going to do it real quick. So to me, wanting to change this and quickly grab the money, especially when we ask the questions, and what we're hearing is, is we'd have to dig into our reserve funds. We all know where the economy is now, and I don't know how many of you are talking to bankers and hear what's going on, but I'm not hearing a real pretty picture for what's going to happen next year. And I'm not having many people that are willing to take a bet that in two years, the economy's going to be better. To me, it's just crazy that we would even consider touching our reserves right now when we don't know what this economy's going to be. I, I have the time to look at this. I'm very happy to say I have the time to look at this. And I really think we need to slow down, pay attention to those that we have approved up here on the council. We approved these department heads that have laid out some plans for us. They listen to our guidance. They certainly have heard us about Osage and Beetle, that some of us on council want to seriously consider extending it. They've moved it up to the two thousand and four. That doesn't mean we run over them and try to slap it in the two thousand and three. My bottom line is, I don't think it's time to be making this kind of a change in about thirty hours' worth of time. I'm going to listen to what the department heads have said, and I'm going to take the time to study it, because I strongly believe we have the time to wait.
Any other council discussion? Mr. Mumgarth.
No.
You want to turn your, okay. You want to turn yours off real quick? Okay. Mr. Stube.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So we've heard a lot of discussion tonight, and obviously, it's been within the one-and-six-year plan since two thousand and twelve, and it could have been in there prior. I don't recall, but obviously, in the information that we have, it states that. I've been a proponent of including those extensions, because I'm a strong proponent of connectivity within neighborhoods. Obviously, the intent of connectivity within neighborhoods is to try to eliminate having neighbors to go around to get on arterials to get to another location where they want to either get out of the neighborhood or get back into the neighborhood. I do want to make sure that there's an understanding, because I think there's a couple council members have indicated a sentence from the traffic study that doesn't fully state what was included as the summary at the end of the traffic study, and I will put my glasses on and read that. And it says, "In summary, it is anticipated that the addition of three proposed access points would not have significant impact on traffic operations. If built, the intersections are expected to operate acceptably with single shared lane, stop-controlled minor approaches. The extensions also provide a small percentage of traffic diverting off Washington Street, Arterial Street, network permeability, and enhanced emergency response for the neighborhood." So I just wanted to make sure to get into the record. Obviously, it is part of the record, but I wanted to get into the record that that's the full, bold, executive summary from the information that was developed by the traffic engineer. I do have a concern with regard to Council Mumgarth's amendment, because he's indicating an amendment to construct. And obviously, I don't think, and I don't plan to support his amendment to construct for next year. It's in the one-and-six. I approve it being in the one-and-six. But obviously, staff have put together a proposed one-year plan that's about ten and a half million dollars. And if you look at trying to get seven hundred thousand dollars thrown in there, what's got to give? Obviously, we've got almost a four million dollar bond payment. We've got two-point, almost two-point-four million in pavement program, which I think everybody in this chamber supports. We've got improvements to Ninetieth Street that need to be done in accordance with the Tower District, and some other minor projects. So I'm not going to support the amendment to construct next year. I just don't think there's enough time to be able to go through a design, any property impacts that may occur, and to do construction next year. So I, once again, I'll just restate that I support connectivity. I understand that neighbors don't like it. Obviously, I've, we hear that numerous occasions about citizens not liking something, and we do definitely take that into consideration when we're making our votes. But connectivity is important to me, having access for citizens that don't necessarily live on those particular streets that are further into the area, have the ability, if these extensions are put in, to be able to use that access point to get on the First Street if they want to go southeast. And so I will continue, at this point in time, to support the one-and-six. Obviously, it's got to go through Planning Commission, then back to City Council, but I don't intend to support the amendment to construct next year. Thank you.
Mr. Ingberg.
I simply wanted to ask the city clerk if you have no problem. We did receive one email from a constituent from that area. I ask to be part of the public record if I could.
And a copy of that was handed out to everybody.
Thank you.
Mr. Glover.
Can we just tape this conversation, so two years from now, when we talk about this again, we can just play this and not have to go through all this?
They're all recorded, televised, and on YouTube.
You know, I don't know how many times we've talked about this, and I, I understand people that live in that area, but also understand connectivity, and I understand Mr. Mumgarth's frustration with not moving this thing forward in the past and with this amendment now. I support the connectivity, like Mr. Stube said, it's important. It's important for people to get out, and while you think by living in that neighborhood, it's easy to get in and out, but the amount of traffic that you generate from that area, and you say, well, you use an area that you talk about that's different from this area, it still creates traffic, and there's still no way out of there from that direction, and there needs to be. And we can kick it down the road, and I'm not going to vote for this. Like Mr. Stube said, it's part of the one-and-six-year road plan, and I'm going to move with it. I hope I don't have to sit here another hour or two and listen to the same conversation that we had tonight, because this will be, what, third time maybe, fourth time? And we need some connectivity to that area. So I think you guys need to have a meeting at some point and decide where it's going to be, so that we can, when we talk about it in two years, three years, whenever we get around to it, that you can agree, all thirty of you can agree, that it's something that we need to do. So I will be voting against Mr. Mumgarth's motion, but it's not because I don't support it.
Mr. Mumgarth.
Well, I'm going to address what Mr. Stube has said, because he's a man who knows a whole lot more about this subject than I do. When you said that my motion means it shall be constructed during this year, well, my motion didn't say anything about constructing. It just says, put it on the plan the same way as all the others are on the plan. And I read the synopsis, and the plan says nothing about construction. I read the synopsis, see, this is where my confusion comes in. I read the synopsis that says that the plan is a planning tool for management, and it promotes a transport, okay. And these projects are proposed, this is the synopsis that was provided to us. Projects are proposed for construction pending available funding in this twenty-two, twenty-three capital improvements budget. And that's the only reference I see to construction. So all that I'm asking is that this be put in, into the same category as all the rest of them. And if design is necessary, well, you do the design too. And I'm just saying that if these others can just move forward, it can be placed on this plan in a plan to move forward, that I want this on the same status. And, you know, again, does that mean they get constructed this year? Well, only with available funding, I guess, because that's what we've been told. With respect to, you know, why I brought this forward, I brought it forward because I'm tired of kicking the can down the road and going on. And I, when the system, when the process here was changed between looking at one-and-six-year road plans, which I was very familiar, you make your amendments to move it up into that one-and-six years, which will include the twenty-two, twenty-three year, and I'm not quite sure why the redundancy. But, okay, that's the process we've had. And I, you know, my position on this has been very clear. I think I made it clear when we, a year ago, when we debated the one-and-six-year plan. And I've been told by staff, every time I wanted to bring it up, I would bring it up casually. As when the, when the Public Works Committee was going to have the police and fire chief look at it, I talked to a staff about, well, what are you doing, and how's this working? And I was always told to wait. Don't bring it up until there was the road plan. Well, silly me. I expected that to mean the one-and-six-year road plan. And then this plan comes in on Friday, and maybe I'm just stupid, or nobody ever talks to me, or whatever, but it was a surprise to me. I'm sorry that this meeting has turned into a procedural argument with two council members accusing me of trying to be deceptive and lying when I'm telling people that I'm not meaning to sneak something past them. Sorry it turned into that. I've stated my case, and I will stand by that amendment. And I just cannot vote for this plan as it is presented, because I don't think it's the best thing for the city.
I just want to make sure we understand, and Mr. Stube, you're in the queue, but I just want to make sure we understand what we're going to be voting on. When the motion in the sec was made, I thought I did hear construction, so that's what I was thinking the discussion was, so it was all germane. But with your clarification that it is not, and it's more of, let's just move up the design and begin the work, I just want to make sure that whoever gave the second, which I think was Mr. Jaworski, what was your understanding of what you're seconding, just so we can say procedurally, the motion of the second had the same intent, and then everybody knows what they're voting on. Did you, was your second for construction, or was it just move it up in the process and begin the design?
Move it up in the process.
Okay. So with that being the motion in the second, and the intent of both of those, that's then what the vote becomes, is move the design up and begin the process. Is that correct?
Well, let's quit.
Oh, and the only reason I'm getting specific on it is it has a-
Read my motion again.
Yeah.
You know, all I say is that the-
The synopsis, and nothing in this resolution or the support, the documentation explained in it, says, draws any distinction between design and construction. It says it's a plan for proposed construction pending available funding. Well, okay, if that includes the design, that includes the design. My motion is simply to amend this document and include in the list of twenty-two to twenty-twenty-three projects. A project to include, includes extension of North Beetle Street and North Osage Street to First Street during this budget year that this plan is for. And I would mean to include it in, under the same status as everything else there.
Okay. And thanks, and good clarification, because again, if it says construction, I take that as pedal to the metal, begin the process, which means accelerate design and cost. The only reason I ask it is, the email you sent to staff asking this put on very specifically said construction. And so that, if it is construction, and that's the intent, we need to really accelerate design, and there's going to be costs to that, and get the funding for construction. If it's not, if it's just begin the process, I think that removes a little bit of the urgency. But it's a big cost conversation, and I'm just going back to the email that you sent staff about, please prepare an amendment to the one-year road plan to put construction on the twenty-two, twenty-three. And that's, I just wanted clarification of what are we voting on?
Well, and I was a bit disappointed to see that nobody prepared such an amendment. It's not in writing. I had to write it myself.
It's-
But nonetheless, nonetheless, I'm just going by what the document says.
The memo-
I'll live with what the document says.
The memo, the memo to all council members that is at your desk from Mr. Kleffner is the email, is his summary that opens with, "City Council Tom Mumgarth has proposed the resolution be amended," and then he repeats what's in your email. then he repeats what's in your email. So the amendment is at everybody's desk, everybody does have it, it does say construction. That's why I wanted to clarify again, what's the intent of what we're voting on? Is it construction, or is it move the design up? And I guess I'll look to the council, do you understand the motion, the second one you're voting on?
Yes.
On boards?
Who's in the queue?
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Stube.
That's all right.
Mr. Stube's in the queue. Thank you.
So to go back to Mr. Mumgaard asking the question, traditionally, I guess I would look, and I would look to the city staff to kind of clarify that, is that traditionally I would look at a one-to-six-year plan, that the first year of the one-to-six-year plan is the budget year. Everything from five to six is in the out years, there's no budget available for those particular projects identified in the one and six. And so when I saw the information in front of me that said construction, that's why it indicated to me that I have concerns about that, because construction in the one-year plan indicates to me, just like the mayor indicated, there's a significant amount of effort and time that I have to go into design, let alone have the drawings available to actually then put it out for bid and actually construct it, all within that one-year budget that we're talking about. And so that's part of my concern and my reason for essentially objecting to the amendment, because it essentially says, we are going to construct a project in the one-year plan, which is within the budget, and that's why I brought up the point about other projects that are currently in the one-year plan. I have concerns about taking money away from some of those other identified projects that are in there.
Mr. Gaines.
I just want to clarify, put something else on the record, since Councilman Stube brought it up. But I do understand the point that you're making, but I want to be specific for the record, so we can have record of this. But it says, if built, the intersections are expected to operate acceptably with single shared lane stop-controlled minor approaches. So all of that means to me is that if the type of intersection, which would be a single shared lane stop-controlled minor approach, would be an acceptable type of intersection. That's how I read that line. So it doesn't prove anything to me as far as when I talk about the not have a significant impact. The second part is, is that the extensions also provide a small percentage of traffic diverting off of Washington Street. So the way that I read that is, a small percentage would mean to me that it's not a significant impact on traffic, because it's just a small percentage. I just want that read into the record, because I do understand, but I don't feel like those points are relevant overall to the summary, but I just wanted to say that, that's all I've got.
Mr. Stube.
So once again, I just want to make sure there's clarity here with regard to council members making a statement and not fully putting all the information that was in that last bold paragraph. I can also pull out a statement, which is what was done, to say significant impact. Well, let's read the whole thing into the record. Obviously, it is in the record, but I just wanted to make sure that, don't parse things. If you're going to talk about something that's within the bold part of the executive summary, read the whole paragraph, and that's my point.
Thank you. Seen no others in the queue, please vote. On the motion to amend.
Two yeas, five nays by Kluk, Stube, Engberg, Gaines, and Glover.
Fail, so we're back to the original motion. And just for the public, with that vote, that was to the one, that the whole discussion was on the one-year plan. Nothing in here impacts the six-year plan, and the previous votes still have it in 2024, 2025 on the six-year plan. So it is still there, in there. And then, from a process perspective, I would anticipate the six-year plan probably goes to the Planning Commission in November. There is a public hearing with the Planning Commission, so watch the agenda if you want to have input on the six-year plan. And then after Planning Commission, then sometime after that, it goes to City Council for approval of the six-year plan. And then, as Mr. Stube mentioned, the intent of the one-year is a funding mechanism, the six-year is the plan, so it is still on the plan. If you're interested in the topic, it'll continue to be discussed. If you want to repeat the discussions, it's on YouTube. But, so hopefully that answers process. I know it's very confusing what we're dealing with, what we're not dealing with, why we dealt with it, why we didn't, but I hope that helped understanding. So now we are back to the original motion on the six-year, we're in council discussion, and so it's the original resolution as presented. Any other council discussion? Please vote.
Mayor.
Mr. Jaworski.
This isn't, this is what's in front of us right now, it's not the Park Road.
That is correct. We'll talk about the Park Road when we get to the approval of the budget.
Okay, thanks.
We are voting on the one-year plan. Mr. Glover.
Six yeas, one nay by Mumgaard.
Motion passes. Next is item F2, Resolution R. 220148, a public hearing and a vote. This is a resolution to approve setting the 2022-2023 property tax request. It's a public hearing, I'll open it. Do we have any proponents or opponents? See a lot of people moving, but I think they're leaving. I'll close the public hearing. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R. 220148?
Motion by Councilman Gaines, second by who?
Mr. Stube. Council discussion.
Six yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. Next is item F3. This is an annual item, so there's a couple of things in here that we do every year with amendments. F3, ordinance 1974, and ordinance to approve the fiscal year 2022-2023 budget. Is there a motion to approve ordinance 1974?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Gaines.
Second.
Second by Councilman Stube. Now, there's, we always do, we request two motions on this, so we'll take them one at a time. One is, and these are staff requests, one is the motion to approve the 1% increase to the LID Restricted Funds Authority. That's the one that takes a supermajority. We don't use that extra authority, it's more for the insurance. So it allows us to keep a little bit more restricted funds on hand, but it does take a supermajority to do that. And so I would ask, is there a motion to approve the 1% increase to the LID Restricted Funds Authority?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Glover.
Second.
Second by Councilman Gaines. Any proponents or opponents? Any discussion? Please vote. And this does require a supermajority of six.
Seven yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. Then there is a, yeah, jumped to that one. Then there is a motion to approve, and this was in your packet, a motion to approve an amendment proposed by staff, and that was outlined on pages 25 and 26 of the packet. And so is there a motion to approve the amendment proposed by staff?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Jaworski.
Second.
Second by Councilman Kluk. Any discussion? Please vote.
Seven yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes, so we're back to the motion as amended in both cases. Any proponents or opponents on the budget? Seen none. Council discussion. Mr. Jaworski, this would be the appropriate time.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, so we heard waste of money and throwing away taxpayer dollars on the first deal on the connections of the streets. To me, if we're going to do a $250,000 study for the road going into a park, when it's been asphalt road ever since it's been born, to me, we're throwing money away, because if it is, the study's going to come back and say, put it in concrete, well, that's going to be $3.5 million. There's another million and a half we're throwing away. I believe we should keep that road just as it is, asphalt, where we can do it for probably 200, 2 million, we'll save a million and a half plus the $250,000 study. I won't support this because of that. It's just, we're talking about wasting money, this is a waste of money, because we're turning a park road into a raceway where kids are supposed to be in there playing and enjoying, so that's my beef. Thanks.
And I appreciate that, and I think there's still time to address your concern, even if you do approve it. What's in the budget is the design, not the construction. And a big reason for the design is if anybody's back there in the rain, it's a swamp, the stormwater and the drainage and all of that does not work well with that road. And so the intent of the design is to address a lot of the stormwater type issues when we have a big rain event. And so if you would approve it, it's only for the design, and the design, we could contemplate and challenge it, is part of the design, is it asphalt or concrete? You're not voting on the actual construction, it's just the design, and a lot of that's to handle the stormwater. The construction of it wouldn't even be, I would not even anticipate that being an amendment to this year's budget, that'll probably be in the following year's budget based on what the design says. So there is no construction in this budget. So I think there's still time to talk about what is the proper design, and of course, you guys will have input into that, if that helps. Mr. Glover.
Mayor, can you explain, I'm a little confused on what, is it the entire park system down there, or is it just one side of the road?
So it's, the intent is the interior park system. So when you come into the park, between the park building and Papio Fun Park, of course, you're on that road. You go all the way back to Papio Bay, circle around internally. What's not included is when you get outside of that, so get my roads, my road direction, Hallic, yeah, that's the one on the south side. That would be outside of the scope, so it's just that main interior portion. And it is not, and there's been some discussion with this, I think both publicly and with council, there's always been some discussion of, what do you do with a 72nd Street-type connection? Where's that come in? That is not part of it either. So it is basically the footprint of the existing interior, look at that design.
Just drive it in, you drive.
Drive around.
Drive right back.
Come around in that circle. Yep. And again, a lot of it is to address all of that horrible stormwater problems we've got there when it's a swamp. Mr. Mumgaard. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Stube.
Yeah, so I want to take this opportunity to essentially recognize city staff and the administration for a great budget that they put together. Obviously, this is another year where we're reducing the levy, and obviously, the administration doesn't have to go to the Sarpy County meeting to present the budget, which is great. I do want to make sure that there's an understanding, and we always talk about being fiscally responsible, and there's a perfect, within your letter, Mayor, that demonstrates the Nebraska Advantage Act, that we're going to be asked to essentially refund $41 million, pretty significant impact to the budget. And I noticed that even though our budget year starts, you know, here shortly, monies will be taken out starting in January 2023, and it says monthly, and so I guess I'm asking, how long is that repayment take place? Is it over a 12-month period of time or less?
I don't know if I could, well, I can't answer that, and if it needs to be answered, I'll call Nancy up to answer it, but basically, they'll take a portion out each month until it is fully repaid. But how long and how much? I'm going to look to you to give that response, because I don't know the answer.
The state's anticipation is a 12-month period.
Okay.
They, we don't write them a check, they withhold what comes in, so, you know, I guess we're still going to need to see activity in those incentive companies to keep the level, because what they're going to pull on a monthly basis is beyond what we would have been receiving, you know, three to four years ago on a monthly basis. So we'll see if they get it back in 12 months or not.
And if they want to pull a certain amount one month and where checks not that big, they can only pull what we were going to be given, so that theoretically could delay it. So it'd really be the first time we've dealt with one this significant, so it's going to be a little bit of a learning as we build our model. Because again, finance has built a, what I think is a really good model to try anticipate what we should be reserving, knowing these are coming, but I think this is the first time we've had a significant one where it's called back, so it'll be interesting to see how that works.
Well, if I could just make a comment, too, I would venture to guess is that there's probably no other community within the state of Nebraska that's being asked to repay $41 million over a 12-month period of time.
That's correct, but proportionally, there are some of the smaller cities that have actually dealt with this. I think it was Sydney, because of incentives in their community, they went an entire year without receiving any sales tax that they had budgeted for. So proportionally, some communities have dealt with it, and that's the one that kind of woke up the communities of this, the state has created this issue, which is why then we worked to develop the model to try to protect ourselves. A lot of it, that was the learning of Sydney losing an entire year's worth of sales tax. So, Mr. Mumgaard.
Well, I'm going to echo, go along with what Mr. Stube said about the good work that's been done with this budget, principally the ability to do two things. One, reduce our levy for the second consecutive year. Very few cities can do that. Now, I understand the argument about it doesn't do much good because of the increased tax valuations, but that's beyond our control, we can't do anything about that. We've done what we can do. And secondly, the ability to keep us out of those hearings that are being held for the first time, that we all got our incorrect notices for. I'm interested in seeing whether those hearings and that process comes to any benefit at all. I'm not seeing the benefit here, but we'll wait and see. The legislature's always smarter than we are. Secondly, I agree with Mr. Jaworski's concerns about the money that will be spent or is being directed toward roads in the park. Of course, I want good roads in the park, but that has to be done in a reasonable, beneficial way. And I understand that this first step is just the design for it, telling us what they would do. You know, the $250,000, I think it's awfully steep, but that's what they charge. So I'm going to prove this, waiting to see what that design says, because I've long been a strong proponent of what you called the 72nd Street connection. I'll forewarn you and anybody else who's interested now, I will continue to be that, and every opportunity that I see where that is being foreclosed or can be advanced, I will speak up in favor of it, okay? Without hiding anything from anybody. But Mr. Jaworski has a point, and when that design comes in, we're going to have a good discussion about that. We can sit and have a good discussion about that.
And knowing how passionate you are about that 72nd, so I made the clarification that it is not in here, so we don't have any misunderstanding there. And again, as we're giving the thanks, I really do want to thank the council. You know, we go about every three, two and a half to three years, we have the planning retreat, and we talk about the goals and the vision and think long-term, and we've done that now three times, and the goals have stayed fairly consistent during that time, that one or two will change, but fundamentally, they stay the same. And I'll tell you, staff and department heads, take the goals that you establish extremely serious, and hope you see that's evident in the budget. So it does start with those retreats, and that sets the framework. And then, a lot of latitude to staff of understanding the community and what's important and what's important for their departments, so they build it from the bottom up based on your goals. And then, from the administration side, just try to put the wrapper and the context around it and take care of any of the big issues. But again, thank you for the seriousness of the retreats, and having, I think I might have mentioned to a couple of you, I think it's about time to do another one, and we'll probably look at mid-January to do the next one, and then that'll set the tone then for the next couple, three years. So thank you very much. And Nancy, thank you for everything you do. A lot of professionalism and a lot of insight, so thank you very much. If there's no other discussion, we'll call for a vote, but I do want to note that, and it's because of what the state, I think, has done to us with that additional public hearing, we, that changed the timeframes a little bit, and in order to have the budget actually approved in time for the fiscal year and the levy to be set, there's an emergency clause in here that waives the traditional 15-day waiting period, and to pass any... And to pass anything with the emergency clause, it does require a supermajority. So with that, please vote.
7800.
Motion passes. Next is item F4, Resolution R220149, a public hearing and a vote, a resolution to approve the Third Amendment to the 370 North Mixed Use Development Agreement. It's a public hearing. I'll open it. Any proponents? Welcome. If you'd state your name and address for the record.
Hello, good evening.
Sorry, we didn't move it up on the agenda like we did the liquor license.
Michelle was a pizza guy. Todd Swarzak, Nodle Companies, 2285 South 67th Street. This is an amendment for 370 North, or more commonly known as Steel Ridge. We have a couple of changes that required this amendment. The first change, requested change, is that we would be including a lot that was formerly not allowed for auto sales to have the auto sales use on it. And the reason that we're doing that is because the lot is being combined with a larger lot for a Kia dealership. So three-fourths of the lot was previously allowed to have auto sales on it and a small section of it we are including in that lot. So we needed to request the change. The second part of the amendment is for interior monument signs, auto dealership monument signs in the lot in the development. And these are interior to the development. We're bringing them in the same regulation as the general commercial zoning district and that's to allow electronic messages on those interior signs. So I can show you any maps or explain anything else if you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other proponents or opponents? Close the public hearing. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R220149? Motion by Councilman Stube, second by Councilman Gaines. Any discussion? Please vote.
7800.
Motion passes. Thank you. Item F5, Resolution R220150, a public hearing and a vote, resolution to approve the First Amendment to the Sarpy County Power Park East Mixed Use Development Agreement. It's a public hearing. I'll open it. Any proponents or opponents? Close the public hearing. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R220150? Motion by Councilman Ingberg, second by Councilman Kluk. Any discussion? Please vote.
7800.
Motion passes. F6, Resolution R220151, a public hearing and a vote, a resolution to approve the Prairie Hills Mixed Use Development Agreement. Public hearing. I'll open it. Proponents? Welcome. If you'd state your name and address for the record.
Thank you very much. My name is Paul DeCryth. I am with Redwood. Our corporately, we are located at 7007 East Pleasant Valley Road. We're excited to be here, very excited. Thank you all for your time, attention, and consideration of our proposal. Since this is our first time coming before you, I'd like to take just a minute to discuss Redwood, who we are, what we do, and why we do it.
Go ahead.
We are extremely unique in what we do. There is no one in the country doing what Redwood does in its size, scope, and scale nationally. And I have a presentation to open here. I think it went to sleep.
We've, and we've updated some of our technologies, so I think we're still learning.
No, I love your technology. I love the way the vote system works. So while that's loading up, tonight, I'm joined by, I'm joined with Jessica Thomas with Pansing Hogan and Rob Vanderveen with Lamprey Harrison. So I, I come to here today and speak to you the only way that I know how. And that's to speak to you openly and honestly, which you can see is core value number five of eight core values. The easiest way to explain what Redwood does is to look at core value number one, and that's do one thing really well. And what Redwood has been doing well for a long period of time, since 1991, is build two-bedroom, two-bath, two-car garage with a den and a patio, single-story attached town home neighborhoods for rent. We do this purposefully with great intent to create very unique and stressless environments for those folks who are looking for a home that lacks all of the maintenance and they're also looking for a high degree of management on that. To date, we have over, almost over 15,000 homes. We're in 11 states and we have never sold one community that we've built. I don't, but we do as a company. Thank you. We're in 11 states, you can see. We're on the east coast in the Carolinas and out here west in Omaha. This would represent our fourth project. We are moving dirt on two right now. And we just closed one on Friday. So speaking of who rents and who manages, there's over 450 practitioners at Redwood, all again with a high degree of focus on doing that one thing really well. We are in essence, a management company and we're growing the management company through the development process rather than through acquisitions. How do we find our customers? It's a very strict and rigorous qualification standards, as you can see. I'm not going to read everything on this. It's kind of late and, but I also, I just want to emphasize that everyone over 18 who rents, who resides in a Redwood home goes through a very vigorous background screening process. Our rules and regulations within our lease documents are more robust than any HOA or single-family home subdivision. So who really lives in a Redwood home? The majority are empty nesters, young professionals. Again, those people who are looking for that single-story living experience, peace and quiet, people who do not want to worry about maintenance any longer, and those people who expect and desire a strong and a high level of customer service. So let's get into the nitty-gritty. Again, we have a portfolio of just about under 15,000 homes. Here's the, kind of the nitty-gritty of who's here. And you'll see this in the next slide. Our average age in our whole portfolio is about 51. 70% are empty nesters. Most relocate from a three-mile radius. So consequently, most of our demographics, most of our analysis is tied to that. We have about 1.65 number of residents with 1.5 cars per home and seven school-aged children per 100 homes. We are in very affluent neighborhoods or parts of the country and we are in very blue-collar parts of the country. An interesting statistic, we don't have a lot of children, but the average ACT score of a high school serving a Redwood neighborhood is about 22.9. So who are those neighbors? There are folks that can afford a home in the range of 275 to $375,000. How do we interact and create opportunities locally? About 75% of our, our neighborhood expenditures are spent on local labor and vendors. Approximately 40% of our construction budget is paid to local labor. We're very proud of this next point here. About 3.5% of the individuals who originally rented in a Redwood neighborhood, it's a community 10 years old or older, still call Redwood home. So long-term residency. And those are on annual leases. Anecdotally, I will tell you, I was in one of our communities in Dayton in the springtime and I don't know how to put this sometimes, but there was a woman who originally leased from us and she was in, came in the office to renew her lease. She was on her seventh term. And she said that the only way she's going to leave Redwood is when God calls her to another residence. So here's some imagery and data about the exteriors of our homes. As you can see, they look nothing like traditional apartments. One item I want to, or one unit type I want to call your attention to is that second photo strip from the right in the middle. Those are our Haydenwoods. Those are rear-loaded units. So the garage is in the back. The front looks like a porch. Again, looks more like a home. Here's some interior imagery as well as some items to accentuate what Redwood does. I just, this photo, I really want you to look at that right-hand picture. It's not the designer pillows. It's not the designer lampshade or the curtains. It's that window. And it's more importantly, it's what's out that window. That's the view you get from a Redwood home. Here's our unit types. Our unit types range from between 13, just under 1,300 square feet, all the way up to just under 1,600 square feet. Again, all two-bedroom, two-bath, two-car garage with a den and a patio. And also, I didn't mention earlier, a pantry. So again, why do people move to Redwood? Because of that high level of customer service and that maintenance. Here are our maintenance standards. We have national folks within Redwood who vendor out the local work, but these are the standards in which those local contractors must adhere to. So it's, and again, it's not only that maintenance and management today, but also in the future. This is a image of an older community for Redwood. It was built in 2016. So the design and the style and the look is a little different. We have modified what we do over time and you'll see that imagery in a moment. But in 2017, it won an award in, for, for being one of the best overall well-maintained communities. As you can see, that original siding, no buck, no buckling, no fading, no chipping, no warping. As you can see in the imagery below, we do upgrade from time to time. In our communities last year alone that are 10 years old or older, we spent over $1,000 a home in upgrades and, and long-term capital maintenance. Here is our site plan here. And I'll get into that real quick. I'm almost done. You'll see that this, this particular site does allow for a much more intense use. We believe that our proposal creates a much more desirable transition. As you can see, the site, 114th, is located along the right-hand side. 370 is at the top of this image. The leasing office, mailbox, and guest parking is in that area to the right off, if you follow Shepherd and go to our entrance all the way on the right-hand side and move up and take that first left there, you'll see all that. You'll also note that those Haydenwood units that I discussed with the porches up front are along Shepherd. And then we also have, our main entrance is on Shepherd at, at 114th, right there. And we have a secondary entrance at 117th. Again, some features, we're on 14.72 acres, 100 units, 21 buildings. Again, two covered spots of parking on the driveway, two inside the garage. The average rents that we project, projected a while ago, is $1,925 per month. And that's not including utilities or pet fees or anything like that. You'll, you'll notice, here, I'll come back to this. You'll notice that, or I want to accentuate that, all those roads internally in drive aisles, those are all private roads. We build them, we maintain them, we plow them. They are, have posted speed limits of 12 miles an hour. They're 22-foot wide with a four-foot integrated sidewalk. It is part of Redwood. It is part of our branding, no different than some of the other features we'll cover here in a second. This is part of our landscaping plan and you'll note that we are planting 198 new trees on this site. This is just some additional detail. You can peruse that at your leisure. Here's Redwood today. When we say Redwood today, these are our current standards. You saw that older community that we first, that we built in 2006. These are upgraded standards. You'll notice that on the door handles, they're lever door handles, transom windows, pendant lighting over an island kitchen and vinyl plank hardwood flooring throughout. Here's the bathrooms. You'll notice that these are walk-in bathrooms, not tubs. Again, it, we designed with great intent to serve a very specific customer and client. Bedroom, typical bedroom for us. Here are those Haydenwoods. You can see that front porch a little bit better. This, this is the front side of a Willowood on the right-hand side and that is the back side of a Haydenwood in the left. Some more imagery. People always ask us about storage. We get this question all the time, so I kind of leave this, this slide in here. They said, Paul, I'm, I'm moving out of a large home. Where am I going to put all my stuff? And here is some additional storage space that you have within your unit, within your home. However, we do work with the business community to find storage facilities, cut deals with them. Majority of the time, what we find is that people rent a storage unit for the first year, look at their stuff two or three times, rent it again the next year, look at their stuff one time, and then the third year, they get rid of their storage unit and their stuff. This is just some last imagery in that. I am here in conclusion for any questions or comments that you might have.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other proponents or opponents?
Before you, can I?
Yes.
I got a question. And it's probably a simplified question. I'm principally interested in the units that will be up against the single-family houses that are on Shepherd Street there. As I, okay, the, the planet, the information we were given is the zoning change is for multiple family. These are all two- and three-unit, units, right? Not, they're not apartments in any fashion.
They're all single-story, two-bedroom, two-bath, two-car garage with a den and a patio and a pantry. As you can see, the homes, the buildings that are along Shepherd, I think there's one that's a four, four-unit building and then the rest are threes. Correct?
No, there, there's no single.
No.
Along there at all.
No.
Okay. I'm glad, first of all, I'll commend you for bringing these to Papillion. I agree with you. This is a increasingly needed market and I'm glad to see you doing it. And I, you know, and I'm glad to see that that's not the typical apartment complex that's going to be back in the people's backyards. From the back of their, of your units, they will see what looks a lot like a large house, right? Okay, that's what I like. Thank you.
Thank you again. We're really excited and want to, again, say thanks to staff for all their help to get us to this point. It's not been easy, but we're here and we love your support. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other proponents or opponents? Want to know?
I was just going to say, Rob Vanderveen, Lamprey Harrison, 14710 West Sedge Road, civil engineer for representing Redwood. So I'm here for any questions as well.
Thank you. Mr. Stube.
Yeah, I'm just curious what kind of the build-out timeframe is. You start one unit and just kind of move on down the line and continue to build? And how long do you propose that it's going to take to, to fully build out the, the comp?
Sure, no problem. Typically, Sure, no problem. Typically, and we're not necessarily in typical times right now. Typically, we are about six months in horizontal construction, so site work, and then we're somewhere between eight and 10 homes per month till it's fully built out. But as everyone knows, it's, it's not typical right now.
Thank you. See no one else, I'll close the public hearing. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R. 220151?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Glover.
Second.
Second by Councilman Stube. Any other discussion? Please vote.
7808.
Motion passes, and thank you. Welcome. F. 7, Resolution R. 220152, a resolution to approve the Third Amendment to the Prairie Hills subdivision agreement. We purposely put this on the end of, into the agenda so you'd get to hang out with us all night, Larry.
I enjoyed it very much.
Name and address for the record.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Larry Jovan, 11440 West Center Road, appearing on behalf of Sanitarium Improvement District Number 302.
And if I did not open the public hearing, it's open.
Oh, it's open. I'm sorry.
I forgot. I, I'm not sure if I did.
Yeah. So, so with, with me tonight, so I am appearing on behalf of the Sanitarium Improvement District. With me tonight is Herb Freeman, the original developer of the Prairie Hills subdivision. He's also the chair of the SID board. With me tonight also is Adam Flanagan of Blue Stem Capital Partners. They're the municipal advisor for SID 302. So what precipitated this Third Amendment was the prior project that you just heard. So that's why we're here to amend it. We've been working with staff for a while to figure out, as Mr. DeGryff talked about, all the infrastructure that serves that development on Lot 118 is being paid for privately and is being installed by them, so they're not using the credit of our district. And so it was their desire to stay outside the corporate limits of the district, and we were okay with that. In fact, the whole SID was originally underwritten without even considering the value from Lot 118. So in working with staff, we determined that there should be, in lieu of contribution to the general obligation, I'm sorry, the general obligation debt of the district in the amount of $520,000, and the prior applicant, Redwood, has agreed to pay that $520,000 to the construction fund account of the district in lieu of being a part of the SID. And our municipal advisors determined that's in the best interest of the SID. We think this is a great compatible use within the Prairie Hills subdivision. This was actually, Third Amendment was approved by the SID board, which has a resident on it last week, so we're here to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Mr. Stube.
Yeah, so before we start, I'd like to welcome Mr. Freeman down to Papillion again. It's been a while since you've been here, so, so welcome. Yes, you bet. I, I think it is somewhat unique from the perspective of kind of this partial annexation with the in lieu, and so obviously, you worked with city staff, and I think that demonstrates that cooperative spirit that we have down in Papillion area, so I thank you for that.
Thank you.
Do we have any other proponents or opponents? Welcome back.
Thanks. Jessica Thomas here on behalf of the developer, 10250 Regency Circle. As Larry mentioned, we've worked very closely with city staff on this matter. We asked for your approval on this resolution, and if you have any questions on this matter, we're here to answer them.
Thank you very much. And if people think she looks familiar, that's because she used to work for the City of Papillion as an attorney, so again, welcome back. Any other proponents or opponents? Close the public hearing. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R. 220152? Motion by Councilman Gaines. Second by Councilman Ingberg. Any more discussion? Please vote.
7808.
Motion passes. We took care of F. 8 and F. 9, so F. 10. Resolution R. 220161, a resolution to amend 2022-2023 salary ranges for management and exempt employees. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R. 220161? Motion by Councilman Glover.
Second.
Second by Councilman Gaines. Any proponents or opponents? Any council discussion? Please
7808.
Motion passes. F. 11, Resolution R. 110162, a resolution to approve an interlocal agreement between Sarpy County and the cities of Papillion, Springfield, and Gretna for the creation of the Western Sarpy Transportation Enhancement Plan. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R. 220162?
Okay.
Motion by Councilman Ingberg.
Second.
Second by Councilman Jaworski. Any proponents or opponents? Welcome. And restate your name and address for the record again.
Edward Weniger, 1709 Ridge Drive. I was just curious if you can give us a brief summary of what this is.
Yeah, and I think the simplest way to explain it is, drive around Papillion on the eastern boundary where it butts Bellevue. Unless you're on Cornhusker or 370 or Schram, you can't get there from here because the roads just never were designed to connect. And they may be real logical one way, and then you get into acreages and a snake nest. We're gonna be with the growth that's occurring in Papillion's western edge, Gretna's eastern edge, and Sarpy County, I mean Springfield on the north and the east, I west, I mean. If we didn't cooperate, we'd have, we could do the same thing because each city's doing it independently. What this is gonna do is basically build a plan for as all of those converge, what's the logical road network. Is that a good summary?
Excellent summary of the need. I, I would also add that the City of Gretna received a grant that spearheaded this project, so the first $100,000 is through a grant, through MAPPA to help pay for it.
Good. So it's really just to rationalize the roads as they all come together, to avoid that issue. Any other proponents or opponents? Council discussion? Mr. Stube.
Yeah, Mayor, does this include any effort related to the proposed interchange that's gonna occur at I-80? Obviously, they haven't identified where that is, but does that include some of that discussion with regard to that proposed interchange?
Well, and on that point, as part of identifying that future interchange, there is a, the, the federal process requires what's called a PEL study. I forget what it stands for. But it's to look at all of the alternatives and pros and cons on every possible spot for that interchange, and look at design, look at environmental impacts. And that PEL study was just completed, and it did recommend the 192nd and Capeport be the interchange. But as far as looking at that, I've gotta believe it takes it into account, but Mr...
The, the timing is, is actually helping to drive this project. So the PEL study, as Mayor just mentioned, was, is, is in the, kind of the final stages. There've been two locations, 192nd is, is probably the, scored the highest. 168th Street also survived scrutiny with that study. All of that information now is, is really good information to help us with this transportation study, coordinating our arterial street network. That's the focus. Another focus will be looking at street connectivity policy, which is a good thing to discuss in light of earlier discussions tonight. So hopefully, as our cities, as development with our cities and within the county grow together, our arterial road networks all line up. They all have a consistent cross-section. We have consistent street connectivity policy that would ideally, by having good street connectivity, minimize the investments that we need to make in the arterial street network. So if you think about, you know, that network is typically on a mile grid. A lot of times, you just plan for an eventual five-lane cross-section. If we have good local street connectivity policy, we believe we may be able to reduce that. Maybe every other mile is a three-lane. That could save us millions or even hundreds of millions of dollars over time. So that's, that's the purpose of this study.
I'll just add kind of one comment relative to where I live in the Western Hills area. Obviously, is right at the border with La Vista. And so if anybody knows where Reeve Street is, that, that intersects with Giles Road on the north is La Vista, and obviously, that intersection is offset. And it creates somewhat of a potential hazard. So I see this definitely as something that's, that's well-warranted when we start talking about the growth that's gonna occur and the interaction that takes place between the communities that are part of this. So thank you.
And I think that cooperations have, happen a lot more. People, I think, historically see Sarpy County and the cities as a dysfunctional place because the cities don't get along, and the cities and the county fight. But I'll say, the last 10 years, it has become extremely healthy, and now that all the boundaries are really identified, the level of cooperation has just gone up massively, and I think this is one of the first examples of that, along with the sewer. So again, Mr. Serge has been leading a lot of it, so thank you for that. Any other council discussion? Please vote.
7808.
Motion passes. Committee reports, public facilities met tonight. I'm not sure who was the chair. Mr. Mumgarde.
Yes, the Public Facilities Committee met tonight. We only had one thing on our agenda. That was the discussion of the field usage policy. Principally, the policy as it applies to Papillion Landing and reservation of times within the landing. This was referred to the committee after, I believe, all of us received a great number of emails, people from Papillion Recreation Organization, PRO, asking for a different split of time use in the landing. And this was principally during the soccer season, though, October through March. They were, they were asking for increased usage, or they were asking for a variation on the field usage policy that we have. The field usage policy that applies to outdoor uses does give PRO benefit and precedent in getting assignment, assigned fields, et cetera. But long ago, when we built the landing, the policy did not apply to the landing and does not apply to the landing. The landing is operated more as a revenue producer because it's paid for through the sales tax. And so PRO contends they were not getting the same precedent that they should get because it's a Papillion organization. The committee discussed all of the issues. We focused principally on the information that was provided to us by the staff, that in the last time period of October to March, there were, there were times when reservations that were being made by PRO were not kept, and they were not following the policy that they, that the cancellations of that time had to be done at least two weeks in advance. The result of not canceling, following that rule, and not canceling two weeks in advance led to empty use of the facility and a loss of $23,235 in payments that PRO would have been making if they had kept the times. Well, after quite a bit of discussion, we were told that, that the staff has been working with them, and they have formalized, or they have finalized the permits just for this coming season, just last week, after some negotiations, and they believe that there's been some improvement on how the time use is going to go in the facility, which will reduce the number of times when there's cancellations, either before the deadline or after the deadline. So we anticipate that that loss of revenue that the cancellations were causing us will be reduced. So the committee adopted a motion recommending that the facility continue to use the policy, in effect, and not change it to grant greater times to PRO, with all the users paying for the time, and that the payment for unused hours that PRO does not use shall be made, the same as all other, Gretna, Springfield, all the other users. And that we continue to review this over the next year, and that the committee have it brought back to the committee after March of next year, and to review whether we have a more, had a more consistent use of time without the greater loss, because what was happening was that PRO was being treated differently than other users, and that the effort was not being made to collect that $23,000 for unused time, whereas other users were paying for their unused time. So we're gonna give it a year's time to see if the, the work that has been done will reduce that time, lost time, and make a better balance.
Thank you. Mr. Ingberg.
Just a quick question, Tom. Does that mean that you're leaving the process in place, they've just improved things within the process? Did I understand correctly?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. And I don't think any other committees met. Any comments from the floor? Seen no comments from the floor. Council comments? Couple things from the last couple of weeks. United Cities met again. No major activity. I think the main thing is just trying to monitor what the legislature's doing in case there's any bills we wanna take stances on. But again, it's a good reminder, if there is something that you have a specific interest in at the legislature, now's a good time to be mentioning that because we can be working with the other cities on either crafting legislation or monitoring specific legislation. So let us know if there's any of that. There was a private event, but we, I was invited to it. The Nebraska Vietnam Veterans Memorial Foundation had a real unique opportunity. Everybody knows the centerpiece of the memorial is a Huey helicopter, the traditional Vietnam helicopter. And I think everybody's pictured that as being the traditional green with the red cross on the front, the medevac. And few years, once we signed our memo of understanding with them and they began the fundraising, the question that became, how do we find a Huey? And remember, I think about a year ago, one, there was one in Vermont that was donated to us. It had been cut apart, but it was shipped here, and then that's where the partnership with Iowa Western was created. Iowa Western has an aviation mechanic program, and they said they would take it in and do the restoration. And then when it showed up, it was in a lot worse shape than they anticipated, but they stuck to their word. But the gentleman that runs that program and the students didn't know anything about Hueys, and he was literally getting models of it to try to look at it, to try to figure out how to put this thing back together and go into the manuals. They worked with Duncan Aviation a bit, but they don't do a lot with Hueys. And it was actually at a Sarpy Chamber, Sarpy County Chamber event where an update was given, and there was a Papillion resident that used to be a mechanic on Hueys for 20-some years. And so he volunteered to be part of it, and that was kind of the missing link on making this whole restoration occur. So then, once the restoration came together, the foundation wrote an article for the National Vietnam Veterans Magazine, and it was in there. And every, every aircraft has a unique tail number, and that tail number was mentioned in the article. There was a gentleman in California that recognized the tail number, and he was the original crew member on that helicopter when it was brand-new, had like four to six hours, and so made contact with him. Michael Sevier did a Papio Vision story about the interview with that gentleman, and he kept a daily diary of his whole time in Vietnam, and he's given that to us. So now we have the daily log of every time that helicopter took flight. And so that helped the students and the restoration. But then the cool thing is unbeknownst to us, he made contact with all the other original crew members. And his one request was, sometime before it's mounted, can I come up and just sit in at one time? And so because of that, the foundation, as part of the unveiling, when it was done at Iowa Western, put on a ceremony and invited him up, and he brought up all the original crew and their families. And so it was, it was, they had a reunion. Some of them hadn't seen each other in 53 years, and so they had a reunion over the weekend. Michael Sevier spent a lot, was able to spend a lot of time with him, so he's documented some of this. It'll come out in stories. And then they did the unveiling at Iowa Western, so pretty cool event. Michael was invited to document it, but then I was able to go and, and watch it. So that'd be pretty cool. But the one unique thing is, and it'll cause some, probably cause some questions, that red cross on the front of that green Huey, I think, is what everybody thinks of as Vietnam. But the rest of the story was, when it was picked up, it was not a medevac. It was a command and control. Saw, saw a lot of battle, and it did a lot of evacuations, but it was more command and control, and it was in a unit called the Snoopy unit. So what's on, what was on the front of it was a Snoopy. And their request was, can you restore it? And so now it's got Snoopy on the front of it. So that'll cause a lot of questions, but it'll be a great education. Mr. Mumgarde.
Yeah, I just wanted to make a comment. Yesterday, the Papillion Community Foundation celebrated its 25th-year anniversary. Now, that's the organization that puts on Papillion Days, Winter Wonderland, the Butterfly benches, all those wonderful things that are making Papillion unique to live in, visit, et cetera. Draws, Winter Wonderland is noted by you yesterday- Draws, Winter Wonderland, as noted by you yesterday, draws hundreds of people from outside the community into Papillion, and they say, what a wonderful little town. The anniversary celebration brought back all the memories of how 25 years ago, the Papillion Chamber of Commerce merfed into the Sarpy County Chamber of Commerce, and as a result of losing that community organization, the Community Foundation was formed. And the advancements, the growth of both the Sarpy County Chamber of Commerce and the Papillion Community Foundation over that last 25 years is just outstanding, and I would encourage anybody, of course, the Papillion Community Foundation is a nonprofit community organization, they were soliciting donations, and I would encourage anybody who might be listening to this to help support the Papillion Community Foundation, because that's what pays for, like I say, those wonderful things that make Papillion unique. Thank you.
And I think you probably noticed the same thing, but it was neat to see, because we talk about honor of the history, but look to the future. There are a lot in that room, where I think some of the original members had helped form that, and to see them come back and be part of it was neat, but then also some of the current leadership, a lot of young professionals, 20, 30-year-olds who are getting plugged in and providing leadership. So it was pretty, it was a good event, so thank you for mentioning that. And then Mr. Ingberg and I had, were at the naturalization ceremony. The Historical Society's now been doing that for about four to five years on Constitution Day. They work with INS to host a naturalization ceremony with, where immigrants who have gone through the legal process actually do their swearing-in and get their certificate and can register to vote as citizens. 30-some people, 18 different countries, and you can just see the pride in those people that have gone through it. I, I bet most Americans couldn't pass the test that those people take, it's amazing. So it was a good week between all of those items, so. Just a couple of the reminders, I know it's getting late, but the rec department's doing that Friday night lights, which is where they're bringing in all the food trucks at the landing. Mr. Sturzmann mentioned the first one that was successful, but next, this weekend, 9:23, and then the last two in October, on the 21st and 28th. 55-plus clubs got the Fall Festival coming up on Saturday, the first, but then the Mayor's Youth Council is also putting on an event, which is a Hispanic cultural event. Couple of the youth members have a Hispanic background, and they wanted to put together an event from a cultural perspective, so the Youth Council's doing that on the first as well. The, no, the, I'll, we'll send, I'll get you the info, I can't remember exactly where that one's being held. And then the Fall Cleanup Gaze again is the 17th to the 23rd, and if you're interested, the Chamber Awards is on the 27th. I think that's the, a lot's starting to go on. We have a motion to adjourn. Motion by Councilman Klug, seconded by Councilman Glover. It's not quite 10 o'clock, thank you, please vote. Mr. Ingberg. We are adjourned.